Say you have the ball.
All right, thank you, sir. So, good afternoon to all our elected officials, from commissioners, also city council, men and women. Welcome. We are having, first of all, and both mayors, Mayor Strickland and Mayor Harris for joining us. There's been a lot of conversation about pilots, pilot extensions, various boards that that come before our bodies or not come before our bodies when it comes to abating taxes. And so, I got with Chairman Kovet and we simply thought it would be a good idea that we bring both bodies together to have a robust conversation about these issues. So today's meeting is pretty much informational to the various boards that issue pilots or up under their pre- preview. So that's why we're meeting. So there were questions submitted on the front end to these boards, and you should be getting those answers to the questions that were submitted in their presentation. This is a two-part session to come up with solutions if it is deemed that some are needed. But this first segment is just intentional to give you that knowledge. Each and every one of you have a book with how all of this began, probably way before a lot of us came in office, and how abating taxes has been established in Memphis and Shelby County. So I just simply want to say thank you, welcome, and so that we can move forward to having a robust conversation regarding our pilots. And I'm going to turn it over to you Chairman Kovet.
Thank you Chairman. I also want to welcome the city council, the county commission, both mayors, and all the interested parties. We've heard you loud and clear that y'all want to have a robust discussion. A lot of what this meeting about today, the first two parts, is really what I like to call the nuts and bolts. Bring everybody up to speed, how we got here, what this is, and what we're working with. I also want to say thank you to Coran and Brooke on both our teams who have done an incredible job putting all this, they're putting these book lists together for us. I cannot thank you enough. So much of meetings happen is, let's call it what it is, because they made it so. Let's go over some quick ground rules, then I'll introduce our mayors and get the ball rolling. We're going to go through each presentation. Let's use the chat box to get into the queue, and let's try if we can to use the chat box to get into the queue. We'll limit it to two minutes, two minutes per member, because think about it, we got 26 elected officials and two mayors on the call. So two minutes per official and no time sharing. So with that being said, I want to welcome everybody. I look forward to a great conversation. Moving forward now, introduce both of our mayors, and speaking first is Shelby County Mayor Lee Harris. Sir, you're recognized.
Well, very good. Thanks a lot for organizing this, Chairman Kovet and Chairman Jones. We know that economic development and our programs to support economic development are real top priorities in this community, and jobs has been a top polling issue for many, many, many decades. And so thanks for bringing us all together this afternoon. Shelby County supports these kind of conversations and supports our cities, which is City of Memphis being the most important of our cities. So thanks to all of you, and this is great participation to see, and let's get on with the work. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Mayor Strickland, you're.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and other Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity just to make a couple remarks. Prior to this pandemic, we were experiencing momentum in our community on all fronts. For the first time in a long time, more Memphians thought we were heading the right direction than the wrong one. Billions of new private dollars were being invested citywide. Violent crime had gone down for three years in a row, and for the first time in the history, all of us got together and set up free, universal, needs-based pre-kindergarten. We're also the only state in the country with free workforce development in the form of free community college and free tech school. And Shelby County is number one in the state in the number of people taking advantage of Tennessee Promise and Tennessee Reconnect. We've also incentivized the construction or renovation of over 5,000 quality, affordable housing units. And in 2019, 20,000 more Memphians were working than in 2016, and our poverty rate had dropped to its lowest point in 20 years, and one of the lowest points ever, at least since they began keeping records decades ago. So overall, we were moving in the right direction. We still had much more work to do, but the pandemic has obviously slowed our progress. But the end is in sight, and I can tell you the interest in economic development and creating jobs in Memphis and Shelby County is strong. I think we should do everything in our power to foster it and keep it going. My standpoint, I have every intention to keep my foot on the pedal and to capitalize on the interest in Memphis and the advantages we have as a city. We have become a can-do community, and I will continue to press the "I believe in Memphis" button every single day. Now, if I were king of the world, I would do away with all economic incentives in every community. I don't like them, but that's not reality, and it's never going to be. Every state, every city offer incentives. In fact, many locales offer more incentives than we do, such as the state of Mississippi. Memphis needs good-paying jobs. Memphians deserve those jobs, especially now as we come out of this economic downturn. Now, incentives are not the only tool we use to attract and grow jobs. In fact, it's not even the primary tool. But the reality is that economic development, this quest for jobs, is highly competitive, and if we don't offer incentives, or we start adding in more hoops for a company to jump through, the game is over before it's even started. So as you move through your discussions today and the other day, I ask you to keep a couple things in mind. Number one, every community across our country offers some type of incentive. Number two, the city and county usually receive more tax revenue during a pilot than before a pilot. And number three, in a perfect world, we wouldn't have to use pilots or incentives to lure companies here or keep them here. But the reality is that to remain competitive, we have to use it as another tool in the toolbox, because if we don't, everyone else still will use those tools. Thank you for your time, and I hope these sessions are productive. Thank you.
All right. Thank you to both mayors. We're gonna go ahead and stay in line with the agenda. So we have a presentation from the Downtown Memphis Commission. Presenters is Ray Brown, interim DMC President and CEO, and Paul Young, DMC President and CEO. So, Mr. Brown.
Bill, I'm sorry, will you grant me screen sharing again?
You're still the presenter. Just click at the bottom of the screen where it says mic, camera screen. Just share your screen. You're still the presenter.
All right, and as we're getting that pulled up, I will just go ahead and kick us off, and then I'll turn it over to Ray. So my name is Paul Young. I'm the incoming president, Downtown Memphis Commission, and on behalf of myself, Ray Brown, the interim president, and the entire staff, we're honored to join into this discussion. I want to thank you all for this opportunity, and we want to try and do more listening than talking, but we do want to make sure that we answer the questions that have been presented. So we look forward to a robust dialogue. We want to take the feedback from today and turn it into action. So I'll go to the next slide. I was excited to accept the position of president of Downtown Memphis Commission because downtown matters to every district. It is more than just a neighborhood. It represents the brand of Memphis. It's the welcoming front door and the heart and soul of our collective community. So every recruitment pitch, whether it's for an individual job, or whether it's to bring a major corporate flag to Memphis, it includes a downtown visit. Activity and growth in downtown is vital to the health of our entitled region. We simply can't have a strong Memphis and Shelby County without a strong downtown, and I would say a strong region for that matter. The DMC motto is "Developing downtown for everyone," and that means for every district as well.
Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Paul. I appreciate that. The DMC was founded in 1977 by your predecessors as a joint venture with the intended and strategic aim to promote growth and redevelopment in the center-city area. By that charge, our work is designed to bring value to our entire city and county, and we take that commitment to our community very seriously. The DMC's operations are funded by an assessment on commercial properties within the Central Business Improvement District, the CBID. It works as a self-help agency or an HOA of sorts, with those assessment dollars fueling the strategic work of creating a stronger, more vibrant, and welcoming downtown. This map shows our CBID boundaries. The colorful sections show the CBID itself, what we typically refer to as downtown. That's our primary service boundaries. The gray area is the additional downtown property pilot boundary, the area in which pilots can be granted. But this is a much more representative map of our work. The orange dots represent the residential zip codes of people who have interacted with our work in some way. They have responded to our outreach and engagement efforts. Most recently, for example, we've been polling people with regard to our mobility work, and to get their feedback on how they feel about COVID and their comfort levels with aspects of the return to normal. Or perhaps they've attended a free yoga class, a free concert, or one of our small business webinars or other events. These are the people that live in your districts but care about downtown and engage in downtown activities. They have ownership and feelings of agency with regard to downtown, and that's what we want. We're intentional about creating a downtown for everyone. Paul?
All right. Thanks, Ray. Quite possibly the strongest tool in DMC's toolbox is the downtown property pilot. The DMC was given this authority for the downtown property pilot in 1977 by adoption of joint ordinances in the city and county. It was pursuant to the Industrial Development Board Act. So just more on the downtown property pilot is strategically designed and used to do three things: increase property taxes, develop property, and to remediate blight. The pilot intervenes when nothing else can, and it puts vacant, blighted, underutilized buildings and properties back into productive use. There's a fee that's associated with the pilot, and that pilot does not pay for the staff of DMC. It's reinvested into smaller-scale projects throughout the Central Business Improvement District through the Center City Development Corporation. This reinvestment often makes the difference for emerging and MWBE developers, and contributes to the MWEBs being throughout the city and county. So some of those smaller projects that you might be familiar with, recently it was announced the loan that was provided to Alcenia's Preserver Partners, Universal Life, Malone Park Commons, and Taylor's Union, also known as The Pocket. All of those are projects that benefited from the fees that are generated from pilots. The downtown property pilot encourages higher and better use of property and property development. It ensures that the property developers, that the property itself always generates more taxes than were generated at the property prior to the redevelopment. And I'll say that again, the developers always pay more taxes to the city and county than the property generated prior to the redevelopment. The impact of the redevelopment often has a compounding effect on the surrounding areas, so it reduces blight and increases activity in the area. It also adds capacity for residential and commercial growth. It aligns with Memphis 3.0 and the goals to build up and not out, and to drive population and investment into the core city. The other key component of the downtown property pilot is that every developer must prove that their financials mandate the need, that the project, it demonstrates that the project is not possible without the use of the pilot. So to say it in a different way, we call it the "but-for" test, meaning but for the pilot, the project would not, simply would not be viable. So just to touch on the math, how the pilot rent is calculated, as I mentioned earlier, projects always pay the pre-pilot appraisal level tax plus 25% of the increase in the assessment. So to say it another way, if you look at the screen, you'll see that the original pre-tax, pre-development appraisal amount was 1,600 on this example property. 25% of the increase would be 40,000 on this example, and so that property would pay $41,000 a year. Sorry, something popped on my screen. My apologies. So I've worked in real estate long enough, real estate development, to know how complicated this development environment is, and how slim some of the margins are, and how important blight remediation is for many of our neighborhoods. The downtown property pilot does something that might seem unexpected for developing a incentive. It actually raises the taxes paid by the developer, and those taxes with the pilot, we call them pilot rents, but they are taxes that go to the city and county. They always go up with the downtown property pilot. They do not go down. And here are a couple of examples of those. As I mentioned earlier, the pilot is designed to increase taxes, develop property, and remediate blight. Collectively, the current active downtown property pilots pay nearly $5 million more in taxes per year than they did before those properties were entered into the program, and you can see that reflected in the chart. And that is because, as I mentioned, the program was designed to raise taxes at the same time that it eliminates blight. Here's a quick example. We used county taxes, but we could do the same for the city. Let's say there exists a vacant lot in downtown, and it's currently appraised at $100,000. We have over 220 parcels of vacancy and blight in Memphis, so in downtown Memphis. So this is probably easy for all of us to visualize. In its vacant and undeveloped state, the property is taxed at $1,600 per year in county taxes. Developer purchased the property successfully, applies for a 10-year pilot, passing that "but-for" test, saying that but for the pilot, it would not be financially feasible. They've spent $12 million to construct the building. Now the property is appraised at 10 million. The owner pays the county the annual pilot rent of 40,000 during the pilot term. So obviously, that's a lot higher than it was previously being paid. The redevelopment of the blighted property causes a ripple effect, increasing the value of neighboring buildings and increasing revenue. Most importantly, when the pilot term is over, the property is assessed at 15 million. Now the developer pays $243,000 per year in county tax revenue. So we've taken that property from paying $1,600 in taxes annually to over $240,000 annually in that 10-year period, and we've improved the neighborhood, added residents, vibrancy, eliminated major blight. And here are a couple of other real-life examples of projects that have been completed. So the Tennessee Brewery, which many of you are probably are very familiar with, is still in a pilot right now, and it's returning more than $100,000 per year increase in taxes between the city and county. The next one is 999 South Cooper. One of our core city downtown property pilots is still in its pilot phase, and is returning more than $15,000 per year in taxes. The next one is South Bluffs. So South Bluffs has actually returned to the tax role, and is returning more than $490,000 per year increase in taxes. And I think we can all agree that that's a great success. More people, higher property values, less vacancy, blight, and substantially more tax revenue. We have another 26 downtown property pilots that are currently in, that are currently planned or under construction that will create an estimated $4.7 million in increased revenue annually. We show a 600% increase in taxes for the downtown property pilots that have returned to the tax role or an extra $12 million per year.
And beyond the tax revenue, the program gives back to the community via our MWBE participation. As you know, the DMC implements a very aggressive outreach program, and recently we've increased our MWBE participation target from 20% to 25%. And as you can see by the number on the screen, the policy is working. Currently, our average participation number for all of the projects we have tracked since 2010 is 31%. In the past 10 years, that equates to $209 million in MWBE spending. Those dollars directly enter our community, and the impact is seen across the entire region. More jobs, more wealth created, new businesses created, and more opportunity. The Pilot Extension Fund was created in 1997 to provide the security for a loan to construct the Peabody Place Garage at 250 Peabody Place. The added benefit of this program is that it's another funding mechanism for future public projects and public infrastructure in downtown. Probably none of you were around when your predecessors made the decision to approve this program, but it was really forward-thinking of them to consider the future needs of our core city. The Pilot Extension Fund can only be used to fund parking and other public infrastructure projects within the CCRFC boundaries. That's the Center City Revenue Finance Corporation boundaries. You saw earlier the gray portion of the map, as well as the CBID itself. The fund is serving the community well. It's allowed downtown to grow and to support new development in a way that would not have been possible without it. As I mentioned, the fund was created in 1997. 59 total properties were included in it, and there have been no additional properties added to it since the year 2000. In 1997, the Tennessee State Attorney General issued a favorable opinion on the legality of the Pilot Extension Fund Program, confirming the CCRFC's ability to extend pilots and to establish such programs within the powers granted by its state charter, a charter that was approved by your bodies, the city council, and the county commission. This was done at a time when a TIF wasn't possible, but the Extension Fund has the same economic effect as a TIF, providing a funding source for eligible projects within a defined area. Of the 59 total properties included in the fund, 43 remain. 16 have returned to the full tax roles. Although each extension was fixed at 15 years, the expiration dates vary because of the original length of the pilots varying. So you can see here, this is not an operations fund. Every property included will have returned to the full tax rules by 2040, but the community benefit realized from its use will continue to serve us much, much longer. This tool unlocked the development potential for some catalytic game changers in our core city. Projects such as the revised Chisca, the Tennessee Brewery, Barbaro Flats, the bakery, and Rise Apartments, and one Beal would not have been feasible without the use of the Pilot Extension Fund.
All right, thanks, Ray. So that will conclude our formal presentation, and members of the council and commission, we're honored to serve our community. We're consistently reviewing our policies and programs, and we welcome and value your input, and we want to take that feedback and incorporate it into our work. So we'd love to take your questions at this time. And as you are thinking of coming up with those questions, I will also point out that we do have a couple of other staff members on that may join in, depending on what the questions are. So we have our attorney, James McLaren, Brett Roller, Jay Goff, Penelope Houston, and Penelope Springer that are also joining us.
Okay. Go through that presentation, and I'll go straight into the queue. And remember, colleagues, we got a two-minute clock. So I'll start. Jones, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, Mr. Young, for the presentation. You mentioned, Mr. Young, you mentioned the "but-for" test. How do we measure that? How do we measure that?
So, so our team, and I'm going to ask Brett Roller to jump in, um, because obviously I hadn't done the, the, the analysis myself yet. Uh, but I can tell you how we do it on the, on the ACB side and talking to Brett, I know it's similar. Uh, the, the developer submits their financials and they, they, they give an overview of what they're expected. Rents are going to be, what the returns are going to be, and then they show a gap. And without, that without us being able to see that there is a financial gap in their project, then we do not provide that incentive. And Brett, I don't know if you want to build on that or, or add anything to that answer.
Well, let me just clarify things.
I'm sorry.
Do we know how many projects that we have gone on or that we had to take place in twenty-eighteen, nineteen, twenty? So the point that I'm trying to make here, if, if, do we really know what that but-for test is? If we have ten projects going on and all ten projects are receiving this incentive, is this really a but-for test or does it just say, hey, you apply and you get this? So without us knowing, or do we know that how many projects do we have total? And then out of those total, if we know how many receive that incentive, that's the but-for. That's just my opinion. Unless we know both of those things, I don't know if we could really say it's a adequate but-for, this project wouldn't take place if not for this financing. Am I, am I making myself clear? And do we have that information?
Yes, Brett, I'm, I'm going to let you answer about the, the pipeline, but I do have a response to some of the other, uh, points that you're making. Go ahead, Brett.
Yeah, th- thank you, Paul. So the way you described the but, but-for test is exactly how I would have. But I think it's worth noting that not everyone who applies is successful. You see the CCRFC-approved pilots at its regular meeting, but that doesn't mean that there aren't projects that apply that the staff determines are not eligible. Maybe they're not making sufficient investment. And in some cases, we look at the but-for test and we decide through our experience and expertise that it does not actually need a pilot to be, to be financially viable. And, and that happens on occasion. We also look at two pro formas, we look at the pro forma with a pilot and a pro forma without the pilot. And we, we try to make it a professional judgment that the project needs a pilot to attract equity and attract financing and move forward.
All right, Councilman Joe, uh, your time is up. Uh, let's go ahead and move on. Council Lady Logan, you're recognized. Council Lady Logan, we can't hear you.
Thank you, uh, Chairman. If you notice, I retract it. I'm going to save it for the, uh, um, the edge presentation. Thank you.
All right, uh, Commissioner Sawyer, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, thank you for the presentation, gentlemen. Um, I agree with the opening comments from both mayors that we are invested in a better Memphis for everyone. Um, and so I'm going to ask a series of questions and, and then leave it to you all to, um, answer those as you can. Looking at some of the properties that you highlighted, such as the Tennessee Brewery, nine-nine, south ninety-nine, nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine South Cooper, um, my first question is, what is the affordability here considering the poverty rate? Um, considering, um, the, uh, economic divide that we experience in Memphis Shelby County? Uh, is it accessible for people, uh, to rent or own in South Bluffs? Is it accessible for people to, um, um, have businesses in some of the commercial properties that are being developed? Um, my second question is that, um, I believe you stated that twenty-five percent MWBE is the goal. Um, but the, you know, Memphis is a city that's almost seventy percent black. So I'm curious, you know, how we've decided that twenty-five percent is an acceptable goal. Um, and then when the breakdown happens and I see that white women make almost five times more than black women on the receipts. Um, I'm curious about any programming or investment in black women and their ability, um, to receive pilot dollars through DMC. Um, and then my final question for now, my final question is regarding community investment. Um, the Pilot Extension Fund and others are dedicated to the development of this, um, CID area. Um, and it seems to be involved on infrastructure and parking. Um, I have a list of cities that I won't go through all of them now, save it for later, um, that also require investments, um, into the community. Do you have any community investment dollars, um, that are required by people who receive, uh, incentives from DMC? Um, oh, and my final fourth question is, what, who is your oversight? Is it the board or, uh, either of the mayors or, uh, any other bodies? Thank you. Like who is your boss?
Thank you, Commissioner Sawyer. Uh, your time is up, but let's go ahead and get those answers. Uh, y'all, DNC, y'all want to respond?
Yes, so, so I'll start and the team can correct me because as I mentioned, uh, I hadn't officially started, but I have been working pretty closely with the team over the past week as we prep for this meeting. Uh, I can speak to the affordability, uh, question, uh, relatively well since obviously I work in that space currently. Um, I know that the, the, the current incentives that DMC has doesn't necessarily, they weren't structured for affordable housing. However, they do have a requirement that twenty percent of the housing units, uh, are, are made available to those at eighty percent of the area median income, which is more of workforce housing. Uh, in order to get to deeper levels of affordability, I can tell you this from the work on the ACB side, it does require deeper subsidies. And so there's a balancing act when we start looking at, uh, how deep, how deep of affordability we want to require. Uh, that is certainly something that we have discussed and will continue to discuss, but that is the balancing act that we run into because the deeper the, the, the level of subsidy, the deeper the affordability, the more subsidy is required. It's just that, that, uh, point blank period. Uh, with the terms of the, with, with regards to the MWBE question, in terms of the twenty-five percent goal, uh, I am going to defer and ask Jay Goff, who, um, is our, uh, diversity, uh, person that covers that to respond to that question.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you elected officials and also the mayors. Uh, my name is Jay Goff. I am the Chief Diversity Officer and VP of Operations at the Downtown Memphis Commission. Uh, I'm going to start off first with the, the question regarding, uh, black women business participation. Uh, one of the things that we do with our program is we always make an aggressive effort and we team with our developers to make an aggressive effort to publicize opportunities in our project. Uh, we partner with, uh, the county's Office of Diversity Participation. We partner with Joanne Massey's Office of Contract Compliance. We partner with MAMCA, uh, we partner with MMBC and we partner with NABO to make sure that the opportunities that are available with the projects that we incent are, are known by African-American black women. We do that. And we also try to do our best with these developers to break projects down, to, to break those contracts down so that they are digestible for smaller, uh, minority women companies. Now, obvious by the numbers, we have a long way to go. But as Paul said, and also I think Ray alluded to when he talked about, um, our MBE, uh, MWB program, we are constantly working on that. One other thing I'm going to mention regarding that, as far as oversight is concerned, uh, the Downtown Memphis Commission does have a diversity committee. And that committee meets with our staff, uh, quarterly to look at our progress, to look at our programs, uh, to look at any deficiencies and try to find ways to remedy those. Uh, we also, uh, of course, report to the president of the DMC and our boards. So, uh,
So Jay, Jay, let me, let me stop you there, Jay. I want to get, make sure we touch the other ones, appreciate their response. And then just, you know, those last two questions, quick, community investment. Uh, so currently all of the proceeds that we bring in are spent within the core city, the, the central business improvement district and the core city that we serve. Um, and so we, we hear you loud and clear on that and we will think about other ways that we can address that. And then the last point about who, who, uh, controls DMC would be the DMC board.
However, let me add, Paul, that the DMC board is made up of appointees from the county mayor and appointees from the city mayor and also has representatives from the council, representatives from the commission, representatives from the state legislature. So there is, uh, essentially the DMC board through your appointees and your representatives provides the oversight that you were asking about, commission.
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right. Thank y'all very much. All right. Next to the queue is Councilman Morgan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What action could be taken by these two bodies to help improve, uh, the competitive edge for the DMC and the ability to both recruit and land deals for the city of Memphis and Shelby County? I know generally speaking, there are, um, I mean, very broad steps that we all take to have a more qualified and better workforce in the area, as well as to lower the crime rates, uh, to increase transportation opportunities. But specific actions in terms of resolution or ordinance, what is a tool or what is on y'all's wish list of something that the city council or county commission could provide y'all in order to be more competitive across the country on our behalf?
Well, I want to let Ray answer that because I don't know the wish list just yet. I'm going to say, but Ray, I'm going to, I'm going to turn it to you.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, Councilman, I think that one of the biggest things y'all can do to help the DMC is to, uh, lobby for us at the state for state historic, uh, tax credits. Um, as you know, most of the buildings in downtown are historic buildings and our policies tend to lean toward and favor projects that are putting historic buildings back into service because that's what makes Memphis authentic. That's what makes Memphis Memphis is our historic building stock. We are losing out because the state of Tennessee does not offer historic tax credits for those projects. Uh, if we were to be able to, to, uh, include those in our list of incentives, uh, you'd see a, a jump in the amount of action in downtown immediately. So, uh, that's one thing that springs to mind immediately.
Okay. And Mr. Young, get that wish list ready. You've got all of our attention right now and, uh, so don't let the opportunity go by. Um, and thank you. And just for the other presenters that are coming, uh, that's a question that I'm going to be asking of each of y'all. Uh, if you want to go ahead and prepare it or preempt that in your presentation. Thanks so much.
Councilman, you have sixty seconds if you want.
I'll yield to my colleagues.
Outstanding. Thank you, sir. Council Lady Logan, you're recognized. Rhonda, you still with us? Rhonda, you may still be on mute.
She's not on mute. Ms. Harrison, thank you for this and to those that have presented with good information. I'm going to go ahead and pose the questions to all of you as well.
Councilwoman Logan, can you, can you, is there a question? Yeah, go ahead, Councilwoman Logan. Yes, we can hear you. Councilwoman Logan, I think you were muted when you said your initial statement. If you could repeat it so that we all can hear. Councilwoman Logan, I can see your name. You're muted. So if you would unmute and ask your question.
Can you hear me now? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. I, I apologize. I'm traveling. We had a death in the family, but thank you all for your patience. Uh, what I wanted to ask was a follow-up on, uh, Commissioner Sawyer's question. I didn't hear the answer as it relates to the, um, set aside that are for low income in, uh, when we have projects. What is there, uh, in place to ensure that these low-income set aside are being, um, utilized by the residents that they're intended for? Is there some type of, um, oversight or someone that ensures that they're going to the citizens and available to the residents that they're intended? It's my first question. Um, and the second one is, are the rental prices lower for those that meet this lower threshold? And this will go to all of those that present today. Now, um, the last question is, when deciding on whether to issue a pilot, what are the metrics used to determine whether the speculated ec- total economic impact is met? Um, just want to get follow-up on those. Thank you.
All right. So I'm going to respond to the first question around affordability. I'm going to ask Brett or Ray, uh, to answer the second part around the, um, economic impact. So in terms of the affordable housing units, uh, right now, as I mentioned in the previous response, the, the requirement is that there are twenty percent of the units set aside for individuals that earn at least eighty percent of the area median income. So for an individual, that's going to be somewhere around thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand dollars a year. There is no requirement that the rent be reduced, just that it's, you know, obviously they do their, the developer does or the owner does their own underwriting to determine if the individual can afford the unit. Uh, so typically it tends to be one-bedroom units, uh, that are occupied. And in terms of the compliance and how we monitor it, uh, we, a- as a, as an agency over the past year or two have begun to strengthen our, uh, compliance and, uh, Penelope Springer on our team has taken on that responsibility to follow up and ensure that the developers that receive the incentive are, uh, providing those units to individuals that meet that income threshold. Brett, do you want to respond to the, or Ray, you want to respond to the economic impact?
Because at the last presentation. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I had a follow-up to your, uh, reply. At the present, last presentation that you all did, it was brought up that a lot of the, uh, tenants that take an opportunity for the low income were students. And there, it was just mentioned, but there wasn't any, um, follow-up on that. And so if you could kind of enlighten us on that and how that will be rectified because we want to make sure that the percentage of the population of the city is being, um, represented by the number of units that the low-income, uh, set aside are utilized by.
Uh, please understand, Council Lady, that we don't have the authority to set rents. Uh, we can work with developers and we do. I beg your pardon?
Councilwoman Logan, I think you ended up getting cut off, uh, but I, I did hear the, the gist of your, your request and, um, you know, what you indicated around college students typically occupying. Uh, usually, as I mentioned, it's more of workforce housing as opposed to low-income housing. So when you hear that eighty percent of the area median income number, that's more of a workforce number and not a deep affordable housing number. However, in downtown Memphis, you do have projects that do have deeper subsidy. Uh, obviously you all know about the South City Project, uh, which receives pilots. I think they go through the Health Ed Board and they can speak to that a little bit more. But there, there are specific pilots that are targeted for affordable housing. And that's what the Health Ed Board does and they'll talk about that during their presentation. But the downtown property pilot is not necessarily focused, at least as it stands today, on affordable housing being the outcome. The public good for the downtown property pilot is the blight remediation. I saw Brett pop on screen. So Brett, you have one thing you want to add to that?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I would like for each board to speak to that, those that do use the low-income, uh, set aside as a part of their application process or warning, to make sure that the percentage of those low-income represent a percentage of low-income in the city.
Okay, everybody.
Thank you.
Council Lady Logan, you have nine seconds left, uh, but does anybody from DMC want to further answer that question before I go to Commissioner Brooks? But does anybody from DMC want to further answer that question before I go to Commissioner Brooks? Seeing none, we'll go, thank you, Council lady Logan. Commissioner Brooks, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank the mayors for engaging in this process. And Paul, congratulations on your new appointment. My question is, what are the consequences or callbacks if the expectations are not met as related to the pilot? I know that there are some agreements, MOAs, and MOUs. And so there is an expectation in regards to goals and what they are. So my question is, if you can explain, are there any consequences or callbacks if those expectations are not met?
I want to defer to Ray. Ray, I'll defer to you or Brett on that.
Let me speak again to the purpose of the downtown property pilot. We don't directly attempt to attract jobs. We create jobs as a result of project activity. But the pilot goes with the property, not with the developer, and not with any specific business. So if the property meets its tax revenue spin-off goals, that's all we care about. We are not concerned about whether or not the developer has met his individual obligations. As long as the property continues to provide the return that the pilot specified, that meets the goals of the program.
So if the pilot doesn't meet that threshold, are there any consequences?
The pilot always meets that threshold.
Okay, all right. So great, thank you, I appreciate it. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Brooks. If you want to jump back in the queue, you have 1 minute and 41 seconds. Chairman Jones, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. My question revolves around the trust fund. And so I'll ask my question. So number one, how was the trust fund created and adopted? Number two, when you are doing loans with the dollars that come out of the trust fund, who decides if those loans are forgiven? What body decides that? And if the trust fund is dissolved, who does the money in there belong to? Are those the money?
Okay, so I want to pass that question along to our attorney, James McLaren. I think he is on. James, are you on?
Yes, I am.
There you go.
The Pilot Extension Fund was created in 1997 after receiving an attorney general's opinion approving the establishment of the rent structure that we used to fund the Pilot Extension Fund. It was approved at that time by the county commission in connection with the fund of a $9.7 million loan from county to Center City Revenue Finance Corporation, Downtown Parking Authority, to fund the development of what we call the 250 Peabody Place Garage, which is the garage immediately east of Peabody Place Center, where TMA's headquarters are today. And at that time, the county was represented by the current treasurer of the state of Tennessee, David Lillard, who in that, at that time, was actually a attorney in Memphis and represented the county commission in connection with that process and reviewed the establishment of the Pilot Extension Fund. You had asked about the law, who decides if they're forgiven? The law, for each of the projects that have occurred to date, they have been loans to the Park Authority, and those loans have not been forgiven at this point. We've had at least one repaid, and others are in the process of being repaid. But if there was to be a forgiveness, that decision would rest with Center City Revenue Finance Corporation, which is an industrial development board, and the members of that board of directors are appointed to mayors and approved by the city council and the county commission. And Chairman, would you give me your last question again, please?
Absolutely. So my last question was, if the trust fund is dissolved, who does the money in that trust, who does it belong to?
Well, at this point, the trust fund would continue to accumulate the revenues. The funds are... The Pilot Extension provides that they'll be paid to the trust fund. So the fund would continue in place through at least 2040.
I'm just throwing in a hypothetical. If it was... Who would the money belong to? Because it's now it's been put in a trust. It originated from tax dollars placed in a trust. If that trust dissolves, who does it belong to?
To pay any use of those monies, which would include a use of the monies at the end of the term of the current funding, would require city council, county commission approval, approval of the Center City Revenue Finance Corporation board of directors, and the approval of the two mayors. Whether that be at the beginning to pay or at the end of the life of the fund.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. You have 52 seconds should you wish to come back. Councilman Carl, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman Colva. Can anybody hear me okay? My, awesome. Going to the headset here, my kids just got from school. There's a lot of screaming in the background. Paul, congratulations on a job well earned. Ray, thank you for your leadership in the interim, greatly appreciated. I wanted to step back and just clarify one thing that was said about how the pilot works if there's a default. It's a lease agreement with the Center City Revenue Finance Corporation. So a property owner quick claims their property to the CCRFC, and then the CCRFC leases it back to the property owner, and it's how we pass through the benefit of what the taxes would be. Under those obligations, which has yet to happen downtown that I'm aware of, if there's an incurable default on the lease agreement, then the lease is terminated, the CCRFC turns the property back over to the property owner, and by mechanism, would go back on the full tax rolls. So that is the callback provision under the Downtown Memphis Commission's guidance. We have just yet to have anybody default on that lease that I'm aware of. And then to Brett and to Paul, if you guys could touch on the pilot program being... And Ray talked about this. The pilot program for downtown is a blight remediation and activation tool. But I think it's important to know that we have, we award different years based on different metrics. It's not just, I won a 15-year pilot, yes or no. It could be a one-year pilot or a two-year pilot based on the returns, and I think it's important to touch on.
Yeah, Brett?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilman. Yeah, absolutely. The BUP4 test is the on-and-off switch for the pilot. Does it need a pilot to be economically viable, attract debt and equity? The length of the pilot is based on a grading system, and it's laid out pretty clearly so that everyone can see it and its objective in the pilot application process. So mixed-use projects grade for a longer period. Projects in certain areas, like on the Main Street Mall, grade for a longer period, or high-poverty census tracts, grade for a longer period. So you look at that grading criteria, and that reflects the priorities of the CCRFC and the DMC. And projects that align with more of those priorities receive a longer pilot, up to 15 years.
Great, thanks Brett. And the last thing, I'll touch back to the default language. Almost everybody that has a pilot in the Downtown Memphis Commission has a lender or perma-financing. And a part of that is to compel them to keep their cash flow or debt covenant low. So they are incentivized not only by their pilot agreement, but by their lender to honor the obligations of the pilot agreement, to stay within those confines. With that, I yield back, Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilman. You have nine seconds. I see no other members in the queue, so I'll go back real quick. Councilman Morgan, you have a minute left. Do you have any questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Outstanding. Council lady Logan, you have nine seconds. Do you have any further thoughts or questions?
Just wanted to make sure they answered the other two questions that I had. That was all, thank you, I go back. I'll just listen for the answer.
Councilwoman, can you clarify the second part? I remember it was about economic impact. I just want to make sure we answered the right question. What was the other part of your question? My apologies.
What metrics or how do you calculate the total economic impact of a project after it's complete?
Got you. Brett, would you like to respond to that, please?
Sure, and forgive me if I'm not understanding the question perfectly. The economic impact study that you see with a lot of jobs pilots, that doesn't really apply for our programs. Our program is about commercial property. The downtown property pilot is about increasing commercial property value and encouraging investment in real property, change you can see. You know, with the Tennessee brewery example, a vacant building that now is full of life with offices and apartments. So as I think Paul mentioned on a slide earlier, we know that properties that receive a pilot are paying 249% more in taxes than they were before. So I think that's a really good way of looking at the economic impact.
Okay, colleagues, one thing we could do if you run out of time, you can always send these folks an email with your follow-on questions, because remember, we have a second meeting where we could potentially address those issues. Moving right along, Commissioner Brooks, you have a minute and 40 seconds. Do you have any further thoughts or questions? Hearing none, move on. Chair Jones, 52 seconds. Do you have any further thoughts or questions?
Yeah, one. I know we heard a lot about the increases that we would receive when we take a blighted property and move it up. But didn't hear much about the amount of taxes that were being abated so that what would have come into government even if you did it and you didn't have the pilot. What would that abatement amount look like? I get the increased side of it.
So I'll speak to that just briefly, because I think it's important to note, and we had this conversation often on the housing and community development side when we talk about incentives, that the money does not exist unless the project happens. So it's not money that was, that otherwise would have come to the city or county if the project does not take place. So there is, the way that 25% of the increase in value still comes to the city and county, 75% of that assessed value on the new development is abated for a period of time until the pilot is extended. So you can just use that rough math of 75% of the post-development value is what is abated on properties. But I think that that point that I made is really important. It's 100% of zero if the development does not take place.
Got it, thank you, Mr. Young.
All right, Mr. Jones, you still have 30 seconds. You good?
I'm good.
Outstanding. All right, Councilman Carl, you yields balance of his time. That concludes, I guess this is Section 3, Downtown Memphis Commission. I might suggest you guys stay on, if not, just turn your cameras off. May come back to you. This takes us to Item 4, Presentation 2 on Edge. Chair Jones, you have the ball.
Chairman Colva, if we could have a moment. I'm sorry if I sound weird, I had some dental work today. But there was an issue with our granicus. So I wanted to give our committee room just a chance to make sure it was up and running. On this, is the granicus okay? I will take silence as a yes. Apologize for interrupting.
This is Bryce, in one moment, please.
Bryce, Bryce, in one moment, thank you.
We're all, hey, we're also recording live by way of Facebook and also on the county's page by Granicus, so we're still live.
Okay, perfect. Our YouTube is up, but they were trying to fix it. If it's fine, then we can just go forward. I apologize for the interruption, Chairman.
All right, thank you, Brooke. I always want to make sure that we're doing everything proper. And so at this time, a presentation now will come from the Edge Board, and the presenter will be Reed Dolberger, President and Chief Economic Officer. So Mr. Dolberger, you now have the floor with your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to members of the council and commission, the administration, and other elected officials who are with us today. Appreciate, very much appreciate this opportunity. If I could, we have some slides to answer some of the specific questions that have been asked. If...
Mr. Dolberger, you have presenter privileges.
Okay, great. Can you all see this? Or never can quite tell.
We can see it.
Is this live? Great, thank you. So in the package of background information that you all received for today's meeting, obviously, was an enormous amount of great information. But for those who didn't make it down to page 247, I thought I would run through those slides by way of background and introduction to Edge. I'll do so quickly, and then get into the very specific questions that have been asked. So Edge was created back in 2011 to create a strong public sector economic development organization for our community. It combined several existing organizations and programs and functions that existed within the public realm, within the city and the county and other what would be known as quasi-public organizations. Edge is an industrial development board, like the Center City Revenue Finance Corp., which is of course part of the Downtown Memphis Commission, unlike the two health and ed boards who you will be hearing from later this afternoon. Edge's mission is to utilize public resources to drive economic development in Memphis and Shelby County. We have five focus areas: boost industrial development, leverage the international port of Memphis, accelerate neighborhood revitalization, bolster small business expansions, and foster collaboration. The Edge structure, I serve as president and CEO. I'm a joint mayoral appointee confirmed by council and commission. I concurrently serve as the mayor's chief economic development officer. So I'm chief economic development officer for the city of Memphis mayor and for the Shelby County mayor. And while we're on this slide responding specifically to questions from the city, city question number five, looking for the about my evaluation document. We are looking for it, we will provide that to you. Board structure of Edge. Edge has an 11-member board, nine are voting members. The council and commission each have an ex officio non-voting member. Of the nine voting members, four are nominated by the Shelby County Mayor and confirmed by council and commission. Four are nominated by the city mayor and approved by commission and council. And one is jointly nominated by both the Memphis city mayor and the Shelby County mayor, confirmed by both council and commission, and that person serves as the chairman of the Edge Board. This is the current makeup of the Edge Board. Albright is our chairman. Oops, excuse me. This is the general structure of Edge. So again, Edge is an industrial development board. We manage what we internally know as the old industrial board, development board, our predecessors, technically, the industrial development board of the city of Memphis and county of Shelby, Tennessee, the entity that provided pilot tax abatements and bond issues prior to the creation of Edge in 2011, the Depot Redevelopment Corporation, the Port Commission, and most recently, the Greater Memphis Alliance for a Competitive Workforce. GMAC is a 501(c)(3), 501(c)(3) private nonprofit, which came under Edge management in 2017. Edge financing tools, we're here today, of course, to talk about pilots, but there was also one or two questions about TIFs. Edge also utilizes bonds, utilizes bonds and other kinds of financing, loans, grants, and we manage Foreign Trade Zone 77 on behalf of the city. Foreign Trade Zone 77 is a federal program to encourage companies or to assist companies engage in international trade. The intent of our programs primarily is for jobs, income... The intent of our programs primarily create jobs, income, tax base for the city, contracts for local firms, particularly MWBE firms, and overall a more sustainable, healthy community. I understand that this slide is something of an eye chart. It would probably be much more visible or readable in your background papers. But the intent of this slide is simply to show that to create a comprehensive, a vital local economy, it takes a lot of activities, it takes a lot of players. And so what you see here is that the different modules of activity, obviously, the economic development in direct economic development process in terms of attracting companies, working with existing firms, assisting startups, et cetera, it's important. But also very important, maybe perhaps more important, the workforce development, education and training, infrastructure development, the tax and regulatory environment, something that you all have significant say on. Infrastructure, physical infrastructure, that is quality of life. The city's new accelerate program will have a significant impact there. It takes all of these things to make for a vibrant local economy. Different projects may value different elements differently depending on what they are. Headquarters is going to look at things a little bit differently than a company that's looking to lease 200,000 square feet, hire 100 people, and set up a regional distribution center. So different projects will evaluate these elements differently, but they are all important. And the entities that spearhead these various efforts are all important. A couple of things I would want to point out at this point. So actually, in the last presentation, Brett Roller made the distinction between job generating projects and real estate projects. And I think that's critically important because they're both necessary for our community. But from a pilot perspective, the reason for our being here today, they are different items, they're different animals. So Edge was set up, set up to do job generating pilots, and we have expanded the scope of the organization and more engaged in neighborhood revitalization now. And so have begun to do some real estate projects as well. The job generating projects are what I call here, there projects. They're competitive. You heard Mayor Strickland talk about how competitive economic development projects are. That's what he's referring to. These job generating projects, thousands of entities like Edge around the country offering incentives to lure these types of projects. Many competing organizations and competing communities right here in our own Mid-South marketplace. Basically, those projects are probably going to happen somewhere. The question is where? Obviously, if we think it's a valuable project and we want it to happen here, and so we wind up competing for it. The real estate projects, the ones we do, the ones others do, in my mind, they're more yes/no projects. We get to the point that the project meets the developer's rate of return requirements. Can we get all of the, can we help them get all their i's dotted and t's crossed in terms of entitlements, the regulatory issues, so that they can get their project built? You very rarely hear of someone shopping an apartment project between downtown Memphis and Olive Branch. We really don't see that happen. We do see people shopping the job generating projects on a continuous basis. Closer to home in terms of those job generating projects, there are, Edge has a lot of partners, and they are critical to what we do. State of Tennessee in terms of providing incentives to many of the larger projects as well as technical support. A whole cadre of folks and spearheading by workforce Mid-South, working on the workforce side, entrepreneurship through EpiCenter and StartCo. There are just a number of players who come to the table in the Greater Memphis Chamber, which of course is our marketing and business attraction arm. So we, as a team, work to create the greatest value we can for the community. This next chart is the same, it's the same one, and the one, the items that are still highlighted are places that Edge itself touches. We're not necessarily the lead entity in those places. I want to be clear about that. Sometimes we're a supporting player, sometimes a minor supporting player. But our programs do touch these various areas. And so we do have a fairly wide scope of operation. This summarizes the Edge Board approvals since 2011. And again, I want to emphasize approval. So not every project approved by the Edge Board will become reality. That's unfortunate, but it is the world we live in. Some of those projects will happen, just not here. Some of the projects just don't happen at all. They get approval, but they never get to, they never get to the finish line. But just looking at the projects that have been approved, 124 pilots, five TIFs, 69 loans, et cetera, totaling a little over $6.8 billion of potential capital investment in our community. So again, these are the approvals. Since we're here to talk about pilots today, this is the pilot, the Edge Pilot Portfolio Performance Summary as of 12/31/2019. We are still verifying and proving the 2020 numbers. You can see here that, for example, the active pilots at that point, the 67 or 68 pilots had committed to 24,000 jobs, they had created over 30. They had exceeded their commitments for average wage, capital investment, and contracting with MWBE and LOSB entities. So these are actually the projects that are on the books. And then finally, in terms of the background section, can't end this without a little shameless plug. So Edge has been honored by many of our peer organizations in 2020 by the International Economic Development Council for our NEED grant program, which was our response to the COVID pandemic, grant, small grant program for firms in our distressed inner-city neighborhoods. IEDC recognized it with a gold award for resiliency and recovery. Site Selection Magazine has named us in 2020, one of the 20 best local economic development organizations in the country. And in 2018, the Council of Development Finance Agencies ended as the best local finance agency in the country. So proud of what we have accomplished. Now let me get into the specific questions that have been asked. And hopefully, we will cover them all. And if we have misinterpreted any, please, obviously, in the Q and A section, let's revisit these. But county question one had to do with what is an IDB and what do they do? So what is an IDB? An industrial development board like the, like Edge, like the Center City Revenue Finance Corp., established under state law, Tennessee Code 753-101, et cetera. We basically are public sector economic development organizations. We're created by one or more municipal corporations. So Edge was the creation of the City of Memphis and Shelby County Government. The purpose of IDBs is to promote economic development, a broad range of economic development activities. And so we can do industrial projects, we can do commercial projects, we can do tourism and recreation projects. We can do housing, at least rental housing projects. So we have an opportunity to do a very broad range of projects. IDBs have a set of tools that they are empowered to work with. We're going to talk very specifically about a couple of those in a moment. But in addition to pilots and TIFs, IDBs can do loans and grants. They are empowered to issue bonds for both public, nonprofit, for public, for nonprofit, and for private entities. IDBs are empowered to buy, sell, lease, and improve real property. They have most of the authority that you would want a public sector economic development organization to have. They are, again, public entities, subject to Tennessee Open Meetings Act, Tennessee Public Records Act, much like Council and Commission are. Question two had to do with the IDBs' use of how or where can IDBs impact or use, add valorum taxes, pilots and TIFs? So pilots and TIFs both impact add valorum taxes. Obviously, the other financing tools that IDBs might use, bonds and conduit financing, loans and grants, don't necessarily have access to or use that source. County questions four and five, can we group these together? We think they're somewhat related. So who issues pilots in Shelby County? You see the, on the left-hand side, the two Health and Ed, the Health, Educational, and Housing Facilities Board. You will hear from them both following this presentation, Edge and the Center City Revenue Finance Corp., and then the Arlington, Bartlett, Collierville, Germantown, and Millington Industrial Development Boards. And though we did not erroneously leave Lakeland out, Lakeland has chosen not to do pilots, at least to this point. Who can do TIFs, tax increment financing, in Shelby County? So we have some of the same players, but some different players. So on the left-hand, and I should preface this by saying, Tennessee has three different property tax TIF programs. They also have, which are, whose, whose potential users are summarized on this slide. Tennessee also has a sales tax, tax increment financing program. We call it the Tourism Development Zone. Memphis has three of these: downtown, the Fairgrounds, and the Graceland Campus. The state is not approving any, that program has sunset. The state's not approving any more Tourism Development Zones, so we may not see any more of those in the future. State, again, has three property tax TIF programs where property taxes are used. That's real and/or personal property taxes. The programs are, they have many similarities, but they are in fact different programs and have slightly different purposes and mechanics. So one program is for redevelopment, community redevelopment agencies. There are two of them in the state. The only active one is here in Memphis. So the Memphis and Shelby County Community Redevelopment Agency has a CRA TIF that they utilize effectively. Housing authorities throughout Tennessee have their own TIF program. I believe it may be the most commonly used TIF program in the state. We have not used it here in Shelby County, but the Memphis Housing Authority also has TIF authority, has a TIF program that they can access. And then the industrial development boards have TIF authority. So again, that would be Edge and the Center City Revenue Finance Corp., and all of the other municipal IDBs in Shelby County, Arlington, Bartlett, Collierville, Germantown, Lakeland, and Millington. And of course, Lakeland and Millington have been aggressive users of the TIF program. This is just a summary or a listing, I should say, of the approved TIFs in Shelby County. Not all of these have been activated at this point, but they are all approved at this point. The Edge TIFs, Graceland, which is activated, University District TIF, which is activated, and then Parkside, Poplar Corridor, and the Raleigh Town Center, which have not, which have not yet been activated. There's a question about pilots and TIFs and how they work and how they differ, and that is probably a longer conversation than, than we have time for today. But simplistically, perhaps at a high level, so pilots can be structured in actually a number of different ways, as can TIFs. But one common way that Edge structures pilots is shown in this top graphic. So the typical 75% pilot or 75% abatement, the company will pay 25% of what they otherwise would have owed if there were no pilot to the city and to the county. And all of Edge's pilots and TIFs are in the City of Memphis and/or unincorporated Shelby County. That's where we have authority. So when I say city, in this case, I am only referring to the City of Memphis. Again, the typical 75% pilots, 25% of what would otherwise be owed is paid to the city and county governments. 75% is abated. And again, a pilot is a partial temporary reduction in property taxes, real and/or personal, in order to induce and encourage a company, or in some cases, a developer, to do some things that we want them to do that they wouldn't otherwise do. And I certainly echo Paul Young's comments that without the incentive, the project does not happen. The kinds of things that we are in our job generating projects looking for are obviously jobs. We're looking for wages. We're looking for capital investment. We're looking for contracting with city and county certified MWBEs. We're looking for reuse of vacant facilities or vacant, or vacant land. We're looking for a contribution, I would say contribution, but a, an investment in a fund that we run to make forgivable loans to inner-city businesses. So it is a quid pro quo. In return for commitments that the company makes to us, we are willing to give them this tax abatement. Conversely, a TIF. In a TIF, the project pays 100% of what they would normally pay to the government, i.e. they pay everything. And then the government, meaning the city and the county, operating through, in this case, Edge, reinvests some of that money back into the project. And industrial development board TIFs can invest, excuse me, industrial development, yes, industrial development TIFs can invest money into public infrastructure and public improvements. And with state approval, in addition to local approval, but with state approval can also invest those TIF dollars back into private assets, for example, buildings. So in, to the conclusion of the pilot and brief pilot and TIF discussion, they both convert property taxes to a project that if they were somehow to have happened without the incentive, would have gone to the city and county government. I don't, in pointing this out, I don't want to minimize the fact that there are substantial differences in eligibility, term, what can be financed, et cetera. But at the end of the day, they both use city and county property taxes to reinvest back into projects. I believe the rest of the county questions were addressed by the Downtown Memphis Commission, so let me move to the city questions. And we grouped questions one, two, and seven together because it seemed to us that they, they were related questions. And I'm going to apologize, I guess, to the entire group, city council, because you have seen some of this before. You had an in-depth presentation on benefit cost analysis into the county commissioners because you have not seen any of this before. And it's a lot to hit you with new, but these, we want to be respectful of the questions that have been asked. So there were some questions about a, an analytical tool that we use called the benefit cost ratio. And let me just delve into it. So the benefit cost ratio is one of a series of quality indicators that we use or have used to look at projects. So we'll talk in detail about what the benefit cost ratio actually is, but the other things we look at when we're looking at a project and that we determine is something that we want in the community and something that needs our help, that quid pro quo, we're looking for property taxes. And we look at what the cost per job will be. We look at the total number of jobs and the average wage. How much the MWBE commitment is. We look at where it is. We look at whether or not the, meaning its location, is it in a stressed neighborhood? We look at whether it's making, reusing a vacant project, property. We look at the other specific elements of the project. We also use the benefit cost ratio. I will point out that up until 2016, we, the benefit cost ratio was a formal part of our pilot evaluation process. For reasons that will probably become obvious in a moment, it no longer is, but we still think it's important. We still, it, we think it does tell part of the story, and it is a byproduct of some other information that we, we feel is necessary for each one of the product, projects. And so it is still something that we do. It is no longer formally part of the process. So we measure benefits and costs. So what are the benefits? The benefits in the ratio as we use it, or we have, we and our predecessors have used it for probably the last 20 years. The benefit is an estimate of the revenues to be received by the city and the county from a project. And those are revenues from operations, revenues from one-time capital investment, and the, that part of, of the pilot which is paid to the city and county. As a formula, it is essentially driven by the number of employees and their average wage. So you immediately know that the real estate projects are never going to look good with, on the benefit cost ratio. Not ours, not anyone's. By definition, if there isn't a job commitment, there will be a benefit cost ratio of less than one. It's also important to note that we only look at the term of the pilot. So if we've done a five-year pilot, this is a five-year look. If it's a seven-year pilot, a 10-year pilot, likewise, a seven or 10-year look, we do not assume that the projects are here after the pilot. But in fact, they pretty much always are. I know that I have been asked on more, on notifications, isn't it true that the pilots, they leave, the companies leave just as soon as the pilot is up? In point of fact, that is not true. And we actually can't think of an example where that happened. We have lost projects. We have had projects go out of business. We have had companies that we have asked to leave the program, but we have not had anyone that we can remember move when their pilot expired. In any event, so the benefit is essentially the revenues that we that we project for the city and county. The cost is the amount of the abatement. So the abatement can be considered your investment in the project, if you will, except in this case, you're investing somebody else's money. Because again, as Paul said, without the project, there's nothing to abate. There is nothing to be paid, so there's nothing to be abated. This is the equation. I don't know if this is helpful or not, but we're going to take total taxes and fees from one-time spending on construction and equipment that are calculated by a consultant for us. And we're going to, we'll touch on how that works. We add to that the taxes and fees that come from operations from these projects, plus the pilot payment, that equals total taxes and fees paid, or taxes, total taxes and fees. We divide by the tax abatement, we get a Benefit Cost Ratio. So we had a couple of specific questions. Let me try to, let me address that. Hopefully, the background helps those of you who haven't seen this before. One question, the first question, city question number one, in fact, how are economic benefits calculated using multipliers? So the consultant that we use utilizes the U.S. Bureau of Economic Analysis Regional Input Output Modeling System, the RIMS II model. RIMS II model is an input-output model, meaning it can analyze the impact on a local economy from changes to that economy. Those changes can be good things, those changes can be bad things. The RIMS II model was originally developed by the federal government to analyze the impact of military base closures, a bad thing, on the surrounding communities. It has been much refined over the years. There are other input-output models out there. RIMS II is probably, from what I understand, the gold standard, the one used most by academic and other users. But it gives us, it allows us to see both the direct and the indirect impact of good and bad activities. We use it for good activities, for new investments in our community. It gives us county-specific and industry-specific results. So we actually only purchase the results for Shelby County. We know that our projects have impact beyond Shelby County. That's obvious. But we are not, we're not interested in that. We don't perceive that you're interested in that. And so we quite frankly don't purchase those results. But we purchase the results only for Shelby County and on an industry-specific basis. The model takes the parameters of the project, the number of jobs that have been committed, the wages that have been committed, the capital investments that's going to be made, what the project is, excuse me, what the project is going to do. It takes all of that input and it comes back with an estimate within Shelby County of additional jobs or indirect jobs that will be a result of that project. So people are working at this, at the project, getting the pilot assistance, they're earning money. As we saw in the prior slide, the average for the portfolio was 72,000. They're buying things. They're supporting other jobs in the community. Those other jobs are valued as, so indirect jobs plus direct jobs equal total jobs in the project, the indirect jobs. We assume that those indirect jobs are paying the Shelby County annual average wage, and that gives us indirect payroll. Indirect payroll plus direct payroll equals total payroll. Total payroll numbers then run through the U.S. Department of Labor's Survey of Consumer Expenditures for the Southern U.S., which shows how people in the Southern U.S. basically spend their money. And we're able to take those results, the consultants are able to take those results and generate estimates of sales and other kinds of taxes. And to the other question, a part of city question one, they only use the local option sales tax. I know this is a lot of detail, but again, this is where the questions and we're very, want to be very respectful and as responsive as possible. The second city question, number two, had to do, again, with the Benefit Cost Ratio. And asked, have the assumptions changed since the adoption from Edge? They noted, our predecessors used this model for a very long time as well. So the response is, the methodology has not changed, from what I understand. However, all of the inputs change. So the RIMS II model is updated every two years. The Department of Labor Survey of Consumer Expenditures in the Southern U.S. is updated annually. Shelby County Annual Average Wage is updated annually. Local option sales taxes, when they change, as they recently did in Memphis, are updated. There is a calculator ratio of sales tax, other taxes, that's updated annually. Local property tax rates and other things, and the median home value, all of which factor in, also updated annually. City question seven is, I'll preface it for you. Why would, why would Edge approve projects where the Benefit Cost Ratio is less than one? And we're going to run you through or review with you very quickly three examples that we previously showed city council, which I think maybe will help answer that, and then we will give you a very specific answer to the question. Pandora USA, a project approved by the Edge Board in May of 2019, came in, occupied a very large building that had been vacant for six years. So big, big, long vacant building with environmental issues. They were going to come in, create 73 jobs, decent wage, fair amount of investment, 1.6 million in MWB commitment. As you can see, a very good cost-benefit ratio, 2.65. So certainly green light there. The table you see in front of you is a table we do with every project and present at every board meeting when we have a project, pilot project, which shows property taxes before, during, and after the pilot. And property taxes here are about $18,400 to the good. They're higher during the project than before the project. Of course, we're pleased about that. But what you're going to see in these three examples, I'll give you the punchline, is the Benefit Cost Ratio is going to go down as we progress through these three examples. And the amount of money coming to the city and county is going to go up. And that's part of the reason that we don't just use the Benefit Cost Ratio as a tool. Second project, another one we like, RDX, a local company actually, out of, I believe, Bartlett. It was looking to expand their third-party logistics. They, at that point, at that point, the balance of the former mall of Memphis, like it had been vacant for 17 years. It's a small project, about 8.7 million dollars of investment, 15 jobs, wage rate's okay, 1.9 million of commitment to MWBEs. You can see the Benefit Cost is less than one. Why is it less than one? Well, as I mentioned earlier, Benefit Cost is driven by jobs and investment, and jobs and wages. And there weren't a lot of jobs associated with this project. But interestingly, as you can see on this table, the net amount to the city and county was $62,000. So much higher than the prior example, even though the Benefit Cost Ratio is lower, and even though there were other very positive things about this project. And then finally, Central Moths, a new residential project approved the area just east of the Fairgrounds, 127 units, a $20 million investment. This was, project was supported by the city as being, supporting the redevelopment of Liberty Park, of the Fairgrounds, 4.65 million dollars of MWB commitment. We certainly like this project. As I also mentioned, by definition, residential projects will have Benefit Cost ratios of less than one. It is simply the math. And this one does, it's .56. And yet it has, it will provide, assuming this project happens, which of course we do, it will provide $119,000 of net additional money per year to the city and county. And so what we've tried to show with these three examples is we think the Benefit Cost Ratio still has value. We still have it calculated. We still look at it, we still think it's important. But two specifically, city question seven, why approve projects with less than a 1.0 Benefit Cost Ratio? Because those projects could have any or all of the attributes shown on this slide. New jobs, increased wages, new capital investment, increased property tax revenue to the city and county, MWB spending, reusing vacant properties, et cetera. So these projects can have, these projects can be very good projects for the city and simply not have a great Benefit Cost Ratio. It's one of the reasons that we stopped using it as a direct driver of pilots in 2016, but again, we still do use it. City questions three and four, I don't have a slide for that. I thought I would just respond. We think they're related questions. And if I, if I'm wrong on that, hopefully, the authors of those questions will correct. And we've never, during Q and A, and we can have a more discussion about that. But city question three was essentially, what's the rationale for providing incentives if taxpayers are not benefiting? And city question four was, does Edge do a census of where employees of pilot projects live? If not, why not? And if we were to do that, how quickly could the data be available? So again, we do think that, we assume that those two questions were related. Truth is, I'm not aware that there's evidence that taxpayers aren't benefiting. I suspect, and again, I don't mean to project or assume, but I suspect that the question is geared towards this notion of who is, who are getting these jobs? And certainly, there are city residents who have applied for jobs at pilot projects and have not gotten jobs, and have not gotten the job they've applied for. We are sure that that's happened. Based on available data, approximately, well, we'll go there later. It's our sense that while the, it is our hope that as many city residents and county residents are employed at these projects as possible, the job-generating projects are highly competitive. And if we are, if we are considering or if we do consider creating some sort of requirement, I think we will find is that we are very quickly not competitive for many of these projects. None of our peer cities and none of our competitor cities that we are aware of has that kind of requirement. And certainly, if we, if we were unable to provide some sort of ironclad guarantee that we could provide exactly the workforce they wanted, I think firms would do the simple thing. They would locate on our periphery, outside our borders, but within our market, taking advantage of all the assets and infrastructure that make Memphis what it is, simply not subjecting themselves to these requirements. To the specific question of, do we do a census of where employees of the projects live? The answer is no, we do not. Why not? Because it's not one of our criteria. So we don't, we don't measure things which are not criteria of ours. Could this become a criteria? It could. How soon, how would that happen? It wasn't part of the question, but let me extrapolate. So as I think everyone knows, and it was, came up during Q and A in the prior session, the pilot agreements, we call them leases. The pilot leases are contracts between the Industrial Development Board and typically the job, for an Edge pilot, the job-generating entity. There is no census built into any of the existing contracts, leases. And it is, seems possible, but highly unlikely that most or any of our existing pilot recipients would agree to adding that. But we certainly could make it a requirement going forward. So typical project takes between one and two years from the time the Edge Board approves it until it's actually built and begins operating. So depending on where we are in our reporting cycle, we, if that's something we want to do, we could realistically have, begin to get data on new projects in two to three years. There is a lag, because the projects don't happen when the Edge Board acts. They typically, again, happen 12 to 24 months down the road. I would point out, we do know from available data that about 30% of all jobs in Shelby County are filled by people who don't live in Shelby County. We also know that a fairly good number of us, of Shelby County residents, that includes Memphians, travel to work in our adjoining counties as well. So we are one labor mark. Dictating to companies who they can and cannot hire is a good way to spike our competitiveness. But we do understand the desire to have as many of our residents employed as possible. And to an extent, that gets back to that prior, I called it eye chart that I showed you about all of the various categories and activities and organizations that are needed to have a vibrant local economy. Edge's role is creating job opportunities. We work with our partners at Workforce in South and other organizations to try to make sure that our citizens get first crack at the jobs that they are physically proximate to, that we can get the training for them so that they can be competitive for those jobs. But it is a team effort. Let's see, where are we? It's, we have four. City question five, we've addressed. City question six had to do with, if you could only focus on five to 10 particular industries, what would they be? That is a great question. And let me take two different approaches to it. So if we were going to focus on five or 10 industries, or some number, any number of industries, that would not be a question that Edge should be answering on its own. We think about, again, going back to that chart on what it takes to have a vibrant local economy. So we would want our workforce development partners at the table so that we were focusing on those industries for which we could be most competitive and which would do, and where we would have the best fits. Likewise, we would want our university partners at the table to see if there were industry, if they could provide research and development industry support or where they could provide research and development industry support that would be most effective. The Greater Memphis, excuse me, Greater Memphis Chamber, which does our business attraction marketing, obviously, they need to be at the table to make sure that their marketing efforts are aligned with everyone else's efforts. There are others as well. And so one, that would be a question that a group of us should answer. I don't want to sound like I'm ducking the question, so I would say, do I believe that distribution would be on that? Given the prominence in our community, the answer is yes. Advanced manufacturing, yes. Orthopedic devices in particular, a strong industry for us, both OEMs, original equipment manufacturers and suppliers, yes. The broader life science industry, manufacturing for broader life science industries, Edge has done six or eight projects in that category in the last year to year and a half. So yes, food, ag and ag tech, yes. Back office and headquarters, yes. There are many that we think would be part of that, but it's a question that ought to be answered by all of the players who have a piece of making that successful. So I would, that's the direct answer. But I would also argue for you all to think strongly about limiting our efforts. Because despite the momentum that we had, and to echo Mayor Strickland's opening comments, there was still much left to be done. We had, from a job perspective, we have been a slow-growth community for a decade. We have been growing, but we have been growing slowly. If we want to grow faster, we need to do more, not less, but more. Now, when I say more, that's not necessarily only more incentives, but it is more. So maybe that more is we need more marketing. Maybe that more is we need more investment in education and training for our population so that they can take, they have a higher probability of securing the jobs that we would like them to have access to. Maybe it does mean more incentives. But I do know is, again, despite all of our very best efforts and being as aggressive as we have been able to be, we have only been a slow-growth community. So if we want to, if we want a different result, we want a better result, we need to do more, not less. Going back to the slides, city questions eight, 12, and 13, we think these are related questions as well. And again, the same caveat, if we've misinterpreted this, my apologies. We will certainly expound on whatever we need to in Q and A. But these questions revolved around compliance and portfolio performance and the economic impact of the projects we've assisted and has economic impact met expectations. And so let me jump in. On the compliance side, so this is what companies are committed to. They don't commit to economic impact. They commit to tangible things like jobs, wages, taxable investment, contracting with MWBEs. That's what they commit to. That's all we can hold them responsible for. Separate question from whether or not we're getting the results we had thought or hoped we would. So first things first, on the compliance side, we do have two staff dedicated to compliance. We do, those staff work with our partners at City Treasurer's Office, Shelby County Trustees' Office, the Assessor's Office, and others, make sure that we're all tracking these projects correctly. We do annual compliance, we get annual compliance reports from our pilot portfolio. We do onsite inspections of about a quarter of the portfolio every year, getting more detailed information and verifying the data in the annual reports. And we have a pilot And we have a pilot performance review and compliance committee that, to whom staff reports. And they review all of the findings on compliance and determine when action may be needed. So again, you've seen this before with part of the introduction, but just to show, again, from a portfolio perspective, the portfolio, the portfolio typically outperforms its commitments. That would be our expectation, that, that is the result. So we have about 6,000 more jobs than companies had committed to. The average wage is about $12,000 a year higher than committed to. It's close to a little more than $700 million of capital investment in excess of what was committed to. And the MWBE LOSB spend for 2019 was substantially higher than what was committed to. I should point out that the, before Shelby County had an MWBE program, we utilized their LOSB program. So it's Shelby County LOSB, City of Memphis MWBE. When Shelby County adopted an MWB program, we dropped LOSBs. We still have some older pilots where that is a, is still a, is still a criteria, but all of the new pilots are simply city and county certified MWBEs. That's the portfolio look. We obviously, to get to the portfolio look, we look at individual projects and we go through a, a process. So this summarizes the results of that process for 2018 and 2019. So for 2018, as you can see, there were 68 active pilots as of 12/31 in that year. Forty-six met all of their, their key metrics, jobs, wages, capital investment, MWBS spending. Sixteen had to be rescored. So rescore is a process we go through, which essentially says, if we knew then what we know now, what would we offer? Meaning, you told, when you were approved by the Edge Board, you committed to, simple example, you committed to 100 jobs. World, seven years later, your crystal ball didn't turn out to be perfect. The world isn't what you thought it would be. Instead of having 100 jobs, you have 75. We will do a rescore. We will take your, those 75 jobs and all your other key metrics, and we will put them into the same model we used when you were approved. And if we would have offered you the same pilot, so be it. If we would have offered you a lesser pilot, we clawback years if we, and if clawback would result in a termination, then we terminate. As you can see, in 2018, there were in fact six pilots for whom we took compliance action. Of those, three were terminated for, for bad reasons, the reasons you normally think of pilots being terminated. One was terminated for a good reason. Interestingly enough, TJX outgrew its facility, had much more success in our market than they thought they would, relocated to a bigger facility, which was not incentivized. So we were all very pleased to be able to terminate that pilot. We also had one that had a reduction, a clawback in years. It was made shorter to reduce the benefit. And one which was, we use the term parked, one which was put on hold. So it is currently paying full taxes until they, and they were given an opportunity to work out some issues, and if not, that pilot will be terminated. But as of now, or for right now, they're paying 100%. 2019, you can see this, the same data, 67 active pilots, 46 in full compliance, 21 were rescored. In that case, for 2019, none resulted in a, in, in a compliance action. So that's the, that's what the companies are committing. That's our, holding the companies to their commitments, the job generating companies for jobs, wages, tax, investment, and MWB spend. And then to the economic impact side of the equation. So again, and this draws on, on that discussion we had earlier on city question, the earlier city questions about the benefit cost ratio. In the process of producing the benefit cost ratio, we produce this other data. So what this does is it's looking at the 2019, the 12/31, 2019 portfolio. And what you, you can see there that the pilot, the 67 that actually still exist as of the end of 2019, they had committed to 24,000 jobs. They had created 30,600. The RIMS2 model projected another 39,193 jobs within Shelby County, based on those 30,600. So the total number of jobs of 69,817, significantly higher than we initially projected back when those projects were originally approved. Likewise, direct wages are substantially higher than we initially, we thought when that project was approved, and the indirect wages are higher, both because there are way more indirect jobs and because the Shelby County annual average wage has gone up. So whereas we thought total jobs would be 46,500, they're really 69,800. We thought wages would be 2.6 billion, they're actually $4.5 billion. So to the question of, are we, are the companies having the impact that we had thought and hoped they would? The answer is yes. The other thing we look at is total economic impact. A derivation of the same process using the RIMS2 model. So we look at impact from operations, we look at impact from capital investment, we see a total economic impact for 2019 of $11.2 billion. And then just looking at the benchmarks, based on the total Shelby County GDP in 2019 of $66.7 billion, our projects are touching or supporting almost 17% of the entire county GDP. Again, our, our projects are only in the city of Memphis and unincorporated Shelby County, but you can't consider GDP numbers. And so those projects in the portfolio at that time, again, supporting 16.8% of the county GDP and 15.9% of all Shelby County jobs being supported by the, the Edge Pilot portfolio. So again, to the question of whether or not these products are producing the impact we thought they would have or hoped they would have at the time of approval, we think the answer is yes. Looking at Shelby County questions nine and 10, which we, we also think are related questions and has to do with, with wage rates and requirements. The, the question points out that the Massachusetts Institute of Technologies Living Wage Calculator for Shelby County would indicate that a, a, a single adult supporting a, either a spouse who's not working or a child, needs a, a fairly substantial earnings of $20 plus. And questions why our current minimum standard is $13 an hour. So the, this chart shows you the evolution of that standard. When Edge was created in 2011, that standard was $10 an hour. It required employer subsidized healthcare, and there was a separate standard that incentivized higher wage projects. In 2016, we revised the, the policy. We set the base amount at 50% of the Shelby County annual average wage, which is $12 an hour. It, we, and we recast the amount needed for bonus points, if you will, to expand the pilot, to encourage people to have higher paying jobs. And that was set at the time at 38,075% of the Shelby County annual average wage. Those two numbers, both the minimum threshold and the bonus threshold, reset every three years. So in 2019, it reset to $13 an hour. And it, for, as a minimum amount, also still requiring employer subsidized healthcare. And it set the bonus amount for, to achieve additional, the bonus threshold to achieve a larger pilot to 40,400. We recognize that if someone is, is in fact making $13 or $14 or $15 an hour, it is extraordinarily difficult to support a family. We, no, no one argues that point. Our, our difficulty is, and where we think the discussion needs to be, is that despite what we want for our citizens, employers are going to pay pretty much what employers are going to pay. The fact that we are giving an incentive does not mean that they are going to dramatically increase the amount that they had anticipated paying. Because again, we live in a competitive world and there are very good substitutes for locating in the city of Memphis or unincorporated Shelby County, or truly throughout Shelby County, in our adjoining communities, all of whom have access to what is now, again, the world's largest air cargo airport, what is the, the country's fifth largest inland port, or five class one railroad intermodal facility. So those assets that we brag about, whether they're a quality of life, or our workforce, or our transportation infrastructure open to all our surrounding, all our surrounding communities. And so, one, we know that we can't force people to increase wages. We know if we set the bar too high, we will simply drive these projects further from our community, and we are concerned. With 45% of the, the population of the city of Memphis having only a high school education or less, and earning about $12, $12 and a quarter an hour on average, weighted average, we want to create jobs for everyone. We understand higher wage jobs and, and the companies that can pay higher wage jobs and have a lot of higher wage jobs can drive and, and be a very important driver of our local economy. Don't argue that either. But to that earlier question of if you could only have five or 10 industries, we think that we need projects across the board. We need projects that are creating jobs for people who are currently perhaps are earning $8, $9, $10 an hour. It's a step up, provides an opportunity for healthcare and an opportunity for them to keep growing. So that is, that's the mindset behind the, the policy change that we put in place. This summarizes, we've had, for my, for the county commission members, Edge has had a series of discussions with the city council about wages and whether we should be looking at average wage or median wage. And so this simply, some, simply summarizes where we are for the approved projects. Again, some of which won't happen, but since 2011, the, the average wage has been 64.7, the median is 55. For those, over the last five years, almost five years, beginning in 2017, the mean or mean, or average is 57, the median is 53. For the 2019 projects, it's 55 and 46. You can see the Shelby County annual average wage for 2019 was 57.4. And again, as we've shown you several times, the actual wage for the pilot portfolio is higher, it's 74. So while the, while the minimum is 13, and we certainly do get jobs, you know, smattering of jobs in many of our projects at the lower end, the averages are higher, the medians are much higher. And so we're, we're pleased we're able to provide those, but we also do think that incentives need to help the people who need the most help. This simply summarizes the, some of the criteria. So for our, our basic jobs pilot, you need to create 15 or more jobs. You need to be paying at least $13 an hour, or we won't count the job. And there is a scoring matrix, so the number of jobs counts. You need to be paying $13 an hour, it's at least 1600 hours a year, there needs to be employer subsidized healthcare offered, there needs to be at least a million dollars of capital investment. On the right-hand side, you see what will not be considered. And I guess we, we put that there because it was a corollary question from the city council, which said, which basically, I guess assumes that the, the scoring process is linear. So the question specifically was, well, if we have a project with 100 jobs at $12 an hour, won't it score the same as a project that has 50 jobs at $24 now? In other words, half the jobs, twice the payroll? And the answer to that is no. Because if you have a job that pays $12 an hour, you don't qualify for any incentive whatsoever. Conversely, let's just say the, the company that had 100 jobs at $12 an hour per the question, that was a typo. They actually have 100 jobs at $13 an hour, so they do qualify. Well, because not all the factors are weighted equally, they don't have the same value within our scoring system, the answer is still no. Those two projects are not the same. A project that has 100 jobs at $13 an hour starts off with a two-year pilot. They give more years if they're in, for, for other things, but it was a minimalist example. We only know jobs and wages. So 100 jobs at $13 an hour gets you two years, 50 jobs at $24 an hour gets you three years. Why? Because in 2016, when we changed the policy, we also changed the weighting. We reduced the importance of capital investment, we increased the importance of jobs, and we very much increased the importance of wages. And so based on that system, again, the, it is our, it is our intent to encourage higher wage, higher paying jobs, at the same time, being able to accommodate those who perhaps are not yet ready to effectively compete for those jobs. Oh, there was one other question, I'm sorry. City question 11 asked if we, Edge can charge an education tax? The answer to that is, is no, we can't, we, we do not have passing authority. But going further, if I can interpret the question, we assume that the question meant basically, can we impose other requirements on the program? So the answer obviously is yes, because we have imposed requirements on the program. What requirements get imposed and how they affect our competitiveness is a very important question. So right now, again, we, we require commitments for jobs, wages, capital investment. That may seem pretty obvious, but I will tell you, our, our scan of our, of peer and competing cities indicates that most do not. They incentivize, they give an incentive to a project without holding commitments for jobs, wages, and capital investment. We do. We haven't, we require investment in MWBEs, a contract with local MWBEs. Most of our peer and competing cities do not. So we have already made the, if you will, cost of doing business here a little higher than in the, in our, in some of our competing communities, because we think that that reflects the values of our community. We require that if you are investing in personal property, if you're getting a personal property pilot, if you pay a special fee, and we use that fee to make forgivable loans in distressed, to companies in distressed inner-city neighborhoods. So, and again, another cost to doing business here. So we have imposed requirements on projects. I think some of the very aggressive additions or, or kickback, wrong term, very aggressive examples where projects have made major investments in communities, I believe those are probably more real estate projects than job generating projects. They tend to be more in very hot real estate markets, where the ability to do a residential or mixed use or entertainment or other kind of project is very likely to generate for the developers a very, very large rate of return over a period of years, for which they are willing and able to make an investment back in the community because they need to be there. They can't take, they typically can't take that project someplace else and do it. They need to do it at the location they've selected, and they're willing to, to, if you will, invest back in the community for the privilege and the benefit. And not the same for a job generating project where 300,000 square feet of leased space, leased industrial space in Memphis is not that different than 300,000 square feet of leased industrial space in our neighboring communities, or in Indianapolis, in Birmingham, and in the Dallas-Fort Worth area, or other places with which we compete. So Mr. Chairman, members of the commission and council, that concludes our attempt to respond to your questions. I hope we were successful. I suspect that we were not totally, and we look forward to additional dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council Lady Logan, you're in the queue. You're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. Can you all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Mr. Logan, for your presentation. It was very thorough and it was enlightening. I had a couple of things that I wanted to say. You have mentioned in the council meetings as well as today, several times, that you all are not the only players or the only ones in the conversation, and I do agree. And to that point, the graph that you brought up in our meeting and brought up today is the one that I want to use to, to just suggest that we, as a, as a leadership body on both sides, come together and decide what is it that we're looking for? Because I think we, it's going to be important in order for us to make any decisions that we all on the same page. And I think we're all, we may all be on different pages as it relates to what it, what it is we're looking for with what you're doing, what type of Memphis we want to see, what type of wages we want our residents to make, what type of businesses we want here. We should have a shared vision of Memphis. I know the mayors, they were, were growing up and not out, but in terms of the types of wages, because my colleagues and I, we have looked at the, the livable wage is not really being enough money for people to, to really live. And you've mentioned today that the education plays a lot of part, a lot of Live, and you've mentioned today that the education plays a lot of part, a lot of, um. Carries a lot of weight in industries moving here, so I do think that we need to come together. And look at what is it that we're looking for and what type of businesses would give that or would yield that in. Um, do we need to look at entrepreneurship, and I, you know, that that needs to be a part of the equation. Um, and you mentioned that you all are job bearing, and I think the the conversation or the desire today was for us to come together. And just reevaluate and reassess, you know, many of us were not there when you all became aboard or this was a joint venture. Um, and so to look at that today to see, is it still in line with what we're needing as a city? We wanna make sure that we're looking at, uh, callbacks, oversight, and compliance, economic development. And if the things that we put in place are actually what we're getting, how we're addressing, uh, these companies that are leaving. And you've touched on those things, but I hope moving forward, we get to talk about these things. And reevaluate and put some things in place that can ensure that as a city, we are getting what we desire, that we are putting. Out there what we wanna see and according those companies that can give it to us. We want business here, but we want that that business to benefit us and not further.
Council Lady Logan, hey, I'm sorry.
Have I used my two minutes?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, okay, but but thank you anyways for that, I just would like for us to come together and decide what is it that we're looking for as. You know, one thing and making sure that we're getting what we say we're gonna get, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman.
I knew that Chair.
Councilman Jones.
No, Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioner Morrison and, well, Sawyer and Morrison were ahead of me.
Oh, my bad, uh, Commissioner Sawyer, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Chairman Kovet. So I'm gonna do the same thing, how are you today, Reed, I'm gonna, uh, read my questions for you. Um, first, I just would like to say that thank you for the presentation. My hope for today was that we'd be able to engage in a dialogue, um, more so. And so I hope that in the second meeting, we'll be able to, uh, actually talk about the change we want to see. Um, I feel when, uh, these conversations keep happening. We, uh, operate from a place of low self-esteem about Memphis and about our people. Um, you know, saying that poverty and, uh, wages are acceptable because of the lack of workforce development. And education is going to keep us in a situation, um, where our children are undereducated. And where we continue to have one of the largest racial wealth gaps in the country. Um, so I just would really like Reed for you to focus on the type of language you use when discussing Memthians. And their ability and 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 the allowing of them to earn what is considered a minimum wage of fifteen dollars is across the country. Um, so here are my questions, how much was spent on lobbying firm Kesa, um, by. Edge to reach out to commissioners and city council? What was the purpose of that and who approved this expenditure, how does it help, uh, with economic development? Um, second, uh, when you listed the average, uh, wage of the jobs. Uh, does that include jobs that are considered temporary or hourly, since those are not salary positions? Um, and if not, can we get a estimate of how many of the positions or what percentage are, um. Considered are, what percentage of our, uh, positions from these firms are temporary and hourly and what they're paying? And my final question for now, um, is what peer review have you done? I'm continuously hearing from you and others that these conversations make us not competitive. I believe it was even stated that even having this meeting scares away business. Um, but, uh, I did some research with the help of my legislative analysts, um, Birmingham, Oakland, Milwaukee. All have investment opportunity zones, I'm I'm almost done, uh, Chairman, thank you. And, uh, Seattle has environmental requirements and environmental investments. And these are four cities that pretty much are on par with us, and so I'm. Say that this makes us not competitive to have some type of economic, um, education or, um, community investment. Yet other, uh, cities that are similar are doing the same, so I'm wondering who exactly you're you're speaking to, thank you.
Commissioner, excuse me, I I heard Seattle, what were the other three cities?
Um, Seattle has environmental requirements and, um, uh, economic investment and environmental funds. Birmingham, Oakland, and Milwaukee all have investment opportunity zones. Um, and, uh, special considerations for those who do community investment there.
Okay, uh, let me start at the end and work towards the front if I can, so, uh, I'm not familiar with those programs. Glad to research them, I'm not sure Seattle is exact, is a pure city of ours in in any meaningful way, no disrespect. Um, it is a much more vibrant and and unfortunately, from our standpoint, successful market. Um, but glad to look at those programs, if you, if your analysts could please provide the information, that would be great, it would help jumpstart this. Um, in terms of your questions about temps, so about a quarter, excuse me, about a third of Edge pilot recipients. Use temp agencies to some extent, and they they, um, account for about a quarter, uh, of the jobs. Um, they are held to the same standard, so. Temp jobs need to pay at least thirteen dollars an hour to the temp, and they need that be offered by either the employer firm or their temp agency. Employer subsidized healthcare, so the definition of a job does not change, depending whether it's a direct employee or a temp agency job. Uh, and then finally, to your question about Kesa, uh, I brought on Kesa, I've worked with them in the past. We are extraordinarily shorthanded right now, it's clear that council and commission have a great interest in pilot programs. We want to make sure that we are being responsive to you. And so we we are using them to help us bridge a a temporary, uh, staff shortfall in terms of marketing and communication, as well as outreach to you all. Just to make sure that we are, um, being as responsive as possible. We, uh, announced at our last board meeting, you may not have seen it, that our marketing and communications director. Uh, has left us to take a job at FedEx, which is very good for him and not real good for us right now. But, uh, Commissioner, uh, be glad to respond specifically to those other communities, but please have your, uh. Um, assistant send me that information, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Kovet.
Ma'am.
I asked specifically what the cost was of the, um, contract with Kesa, if I could get that answer before you move on, sir.
That was a question, Reed, what you got?
Um, the the, well, there's two, so one, I think the the there is a five thousand dollar, um. Retainer for on on overall communications effort and forty-eight hundred dollars a month.
How many months?
Um, it's open-ended, it depends on how long you all, quite frankly. Um, you know, we that we go through this intense, uh, uh, effort with you all. Again, we are very shorthanded right now, and I wanna make sure that we are getting you the information you need, when you want it. And how and in the in format that works best for you, so. If, uh, the Councilwoman Logan's, uh, comment, if we, if this morphs into a much larger discussion with many more organizations. And we do it over a period of months, then it will be a period of months. If we come to. Excuse me?
Chairman Kovet, is that ninety-eight hundred dollars a month you're talking about, I'm just trying to get an exact number, Reed.
I I.
No, it's one-time five thousand dollar deposit and forty-eight hundred, uh, dollars a month, that's what I heard.
Five thousand retainer plus forty-eight hundred a month, thank you.
Alright, uh, Commissioner, if you have follow-on questions, why don't you email, uh, Mr. Dolberger, but make sure you copy, uh, at least copy me on it, I'm I'm curious. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, Commissioner Morrison, you're recognized.
Thank you, thank you to both Chairman Kovet and Chairman Jones for organizing this and to really to all of our presenters. For what I and and, uh, the staff for the really well-organized information. You've provided us with a lot of reading material, um, that'll take me a long time to get get through. Um. What struck me at the beginning was our mayor, both of our mayors' comments, uh, Mayor Strickland talked about us being a can-do city. With all the momentum we had pre-pandemic. And the billion dollars of funds that we've been attracting privately. Um, I think that now we're in a situation where we don't wanna look back, we wanna look forward. And and I hope and expect post-pandemic, post-pandemic. That we're not only gonna be a can-do city and county, but a will-do. And what I mean by that is is really focusing on shifting, because I think what's happened with, um. It used to be with with economic development, that we would attract. The big fish like the Amazon with huge tax incentives. And it, I don't know if you all have read as much about, what seems to be happening now is the companies are are. That's just one of of very many options, and we have so many of the other ones, and we need to tell our story better, I believe. We have the best highway access as one of the top logistics, um, cities in the world. Um, with rails, rivers, roads, and runways. We have affordability in living. And we have a great quality of life. Uh, I I, it's sort of like a broken record when I speak about workforce development. But I do really believe that developing our skilled labor, as Beverly Robertson has said repeatedly too. Is where we need to focus. And so I guess my question to you, Mr. Dolberger, is in our benefit cost ratios. Can we better incentivize companies with the pilots and incentives, um. Which helping us to train our workforce, is there a way we could do that better? Um, for instance, if we attract some company that's gonna do something in healthcare. How can they go into our schools, we have free VOTEC training, but maybe we're not producing the kind of skills we need?
Commissioner, uh, Commissioner, I apologize, you're out of time, but you did have a question on that workforce development, I believe?
That's right, thank you, I'm sorry I went over.
No, no worries, no worries, Mr. Dolberger, you're up.
Um, if I understood the crest, the question correctly, it's, um. How can we utilize the pilot program to? Help create the workforce that our pilot recipients need? Um, is that, and I'm I'm getting a nod, so I'm I'm close enough, I guess, thank you, Commissioner. So again, the the answer is is we can. I I think the answer is yes, we need to think about what that actually looks like, if you will, mechanically. So that it it's done not only effectively, but in a way that is that does not hurt our competitiveness, doesn't help us to have a program where. People will essentially help train their own workforce perhaps, or the workforce for the next company. And but then not have it, you know, it's not, it's not dissimilar to what we call the, uh. Inner-city economic development program where we charge a special fee, I mentioned this earlier, to pilot recipient, uh, personal property pilot recipient. Um, and and they get the the pleasure of paying into a fund. That is used to make forgivable loans to small locally-owned firms in distressed inner-city neighborhoods. Uh, you know, if we found a way to do that that was not terribly onerous. Um, and effective, and so I think the answer is yes, we just need to think about what the end product looks like, so how we can get there from here.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Councilman Jones, you're recognized. Councilman Jones.
This, this chairman. This, I just got a phone call real quick, I'll yield to, uh, Councilman Morgan and I'll come back.
Very good, Councilman Morgan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Dolber, where are we in the current conversation about staffing up, uh, between Edge and the Chamber of Commerce? There's there've been discussions in the past, I know you're just currently trying to fill spots of that are already vacant. Uh, but staffing up and beefing up the recruitment team. And in a large part of their salary or compensation would be based upon the deals that they are able to bring to Memphis and then close. Um, right now, who is the point person for going out there into the country and the world and recruiting on behalf of Memphis? Um, rather than, uh. Once a deal already approaches us, I know what happens and gets into the pipeline once a company approaches us or is looking at a site in Memphis. But who is the team that is proactively on behalf of the city and the county? Going out there and getting deals, uh, for the city and recruiting and trying to pick off, uh, i- as many jobs, uh, for our market as possible?
Sure, uh, thank you, Councilman, uh, so the Greater Memphis Chamber is, if you will, the point of our sphere. Um, they are our lead entity for business attraction, uh, and I would say. Not comfortable talking about their program, but I think that, uh, it'd be good to add them to the next discussion, because I think that. Uh, there is a good, there is a story there, um, we may have had a little bit of a lull, but the chamber isn't in fact staffing up to, uh. Be much more aggressive in terms of business attraction. We had decided actually back in twenty fourteen, uh, at the urging of the then-city and then-county mayors, Edge and the Greater Memphis Chamber entered into an MOU, which. Uh, defined, uh. The the areas that we would both work in, to make sure that there would not be overlap or competition, and. The Greater Memphis Chamber, which had been involved in business attraction, they kept that rule. Um, in, uh, twenty nineteen, when we put the Regional Economic Alliance together, which is a consortium between the city administration, the county administration. Downtown Memphis Commission, the Greater Memphis Chamber and Edge. Uh, we all came together and and agreed upon sort of roles and responsibilities, and again, the five entities in this case, in that case. Agree that the Greater Memphis Chamber should be the the entity that leads our marketing efforts. As a private entity, a business entity, they think they have some, uh, competitive advantages in doing that over, say, a public entity like Edge. Uh, and I do know that Ted Townsend, who is the new, uh, senior VP at the Greater Memphis Chamber. Uh, is in the process of hiring, the job descriptions have been advertised, you may have seen them. Uh, I think there is a really good story there, and I would just encourage the council and commission to invite the chamber to the next meeting, so they can really talk to you about what they have in mind.
Okay, thank you, if we need to spend more to make more, uh, please, please don't be afraid to ask. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Morgan, the chamber is already on the agenda for the next meeting. They've already been invited, they're listening today so they can prepare their answers based on what we discussed today.
I'll be in touch with them, thank you.
Alright, uh, Councilman Morgan, it looks like you've got fifty-two seconds left. Councilman Jones, we're back to you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I would also ask to, uh, Chairman. That if we are ahead of schedule, instead of sticking to these, uh, these time limits, I think it's more important to address what may be some of the concern. And get some of the questions of commissioners and council persons asked versus, especially if we're not, especially. Since we are ahead of time in this particular instance, but I go on to my question. Uh, Mr. Dolberger, and I would agree with you, Mr. Morgan. Whatever we need to spend, if we need to have more people on the ground, if we need to look at the, at a different funding model. For Edge, then I think we're open to that, and I think that's a discussion that we may need to have, if not this meeting, and then the next meeting, because. Um, now, in the report here, I think you may have may have seen something published, we haven't landed a headquarters in twenty years. Uh. Let's have the discussion to say if that's the focus that we wanna have. Uh, I'm also looking at, and I and I would make this challenge to my council and commission colleague. On page two sixty of the packet that we we all received. Uh, I highlighted a part, a sentence that says, the area lags behind in job growth. And then forty-three percent of all workers. Were earned less than fifteen dollars per hour compared to thirty percent nationally. So colleagues, I would say it is incumbent upon us to do something about this. Uh, Ms. Ms. Morrison, I know, and whenever I hear the the education excuse, here's my thing. Does everybody in Dallas, are they a product of the Dallas public school system? Is everybody in Atlanta a product of APS? That's not the case anywhere, I think we need to do a better job, and I say, our part of our role is to make our city and county attractive. We need, if, but if we're only going and saying we're satisfied with twelve, thirteen dollars an hour. That's not gonna make a young person straight out of college to say, I don't have a job, but I'm gonna relocate to Memphis. That's the, that's the can-do attitude that we have to have, that I think that all of us that are serving this community in an elected office, that's what we need to have. So I go back to, uh, and and colleagues, and and I I was the one who asked for the evaluation tool. Because I served as the liaison for the city council to the Edge Board. There is no incentive for Mr. Dolberger to go out there and get a eighty thousand dollar job compared to a thirty thousand dollar job. He's, based upon the last evaluation tool that I saw, it just says industrial projects. It doesn't put a job requirement. It does not put a salary requirement on there. I'm just saying, colleagues, let's have this dialogue. Let's do something different than what we're doing right now. That was the purpose for this discussion. I didn't want us to have some dog and pony show that we've had right now. I've, I've asked for us to be, Mr. Chairman, there's nobody else, there's nobody behind us, behind me, and we got 15 minutes. Some, I will yield if somebody else is behind me. But I want, I want this to be an interactive discussion between those elected officials of how we get better. Just to have a presentation is just like a college professor sitting at the head of the classroom. And we're not getting anything out of this. And that could be a question that, that Mr. Lowry asked. That, and you know, you inspired me with your question, Ms. Morrison. This presentation needs to be more interactive for us to learn if we're gonna, if we're gonna make any direction, make any headway of what we're doing. Thank you.
Councilman, we're gonna have a wrap up session and you can bring your thoughts back up then.
Right. But we still have, we still are ahead of schedule based upon the time presented here, Mr. Chairman.
We are ahead of schedule. Let's see if we end up that way. Are there any other members in the queue? Sig nine, we're gonna go ahead and roll on. Next presentation, item five, Shelby County Memphis Health Education and Housing Boards. Chairman Jones, you have the ball.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Kovat. And so we're gonna get to the Health Edge Boards now. We'll start with Shelby County. Your presenter will be Stephen Anderson. And we'll start there. And then we'll go to Martin Edwards and Stephanie Wright for the Memphis Health Edge and Housing Board. So, Mr. Stephen Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also have with me Mary Warren Babango Stewart, who is also with Ferris Babango Brandon PLC. We represent the Health Educational and Housing Facility Board of the County of Shelby. The board was formed as the Health and Educational Facility Board of the County of Shelby, Tennessee back in 1969, pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated Section 48-101-301 and incorporated with the approval of the old County Quarterly Court as a nonprofit Tennessee corporation and instrumentality of the, of Shelby County to assist with hospital institutions and educational institutions. The statute was amended in 1985 to provide for assistance to safe and affordable multifamily housing for low and moderate income families and for the elderly. The Board's charter was then amended with the approval of the County Commission to include assistance to housing, and its name was changed to the current name, the Health Educational and Housing Facility Board of the County of Shelby, Tennessee. However, the focus of County Board remains education and healthcare. The Board has nine members nominated by the county mayor and approved by the County Commission. Although we only have six active members now, and we could use some help with that, but I'll address that at another time. The city of Memphis, under the Hackett administration, formed the City Health and Ed Board to give the city another means to foster affordable housing back in 1985. The City Board is allowed to offer pilots directly to qualified applicants. And I believe the City Board's main focus remains housing. It's commonly assumed that property that's owned by charitable organizations is exempt from property taxes. But that's not the case here in Tennessee. While hospitals, educational institutions and churches are usually exempt from property taxes without a pilot, nursing homes, low and moderate income housing for, for multifamilies and for the elderly and assisted living facilities, even when they're owned by a 501(c)(3) corporation, are seldom if ever exempt from property taxes in Tennessee without a pilot. Since 1998, the County Board has agreed not to take title to property or to enter into pilots without the prior approval of the County Commission and/or the county mayor. Again, because the County Health and Ed Board usually works with hospitals and schools that are already exempt from property taxes. This has been very workable. But of course, it's, it's not something that would work well for Edge or the Downtown Memphis Commission or for the City Health and Ed Board. Neither the city nor the County Health and Ed Board is an industrial development board. That's not us. IDBs are formed under a different statute, as you heard. And they're primarily interested in economic development, jobs, blight removal and redevelopment. Health and Edge Boards are primarily focused on education, on healthcare, on housing for low and moderate income families and for the elderly. Again, the County Board that I represent, its main focus is education and healthcare. The Board issues revenue bonds to finance hospitals, schools, and to a much lesser extent, housing. The County of Shelby and the taxpayers are not liable for the payment of the revenue bonds. And they do not count as an indebtedness of Shelby County. These revenue bonds are paid solely from the revenues from the project that the bonds finance. The taxpayers are never on the hook for the payment of these revenue bonds. I'm not aware of any other local board or agency issuing revenue bonds for hospitals and schools to the extent that the County Health and Ed Board has over the past 52 years. It has helped to finance Methodist La Bonner, Baptist Memorial Hospital, St. Jude Hospital, along with the old St. Francis Hospital. It has helped to finance Rhodes College, Southern College of Optometry, Christian Brothers University, Lamoyne Owen College, Grace St. Luke's, St. Mary's, Hutchison, Briocrest, MUS, St. Benedict, Lausanne, PDS, Tipton Rosemark, Harding, St. Agnes, St. Dominic's, St. George's, the Collegiate School of Memphis, Crosstown High School, Aurora Collegiate Academy and the Memphis School of Excellence. The County Board has not been asked to finance public schools because government obligation bonds are issued for public schools at a lower interest rate than the interest rate that can be offered with revenue bonds. This is because these government obligation bonds are backed by the taxpayers. And the taxpayers are on the hook for their repayment. The County Health and Ed Board holds title to seven properties with six pilots. That's down from 24 properties in 1999 and 14 properties in 2012. And I want to thank the County Trustees Office and the Assessors Office for working with the Board and helping us to reduce this number. Because of the proposed or the, the resolution that was proposed sometime back by the County Commission placing a moratorium on pilots from the County Health and Ed Board would really not limit the County Board any more than we're already limited. But it would limit the County Commission's authority and the county mayor's authority to approve pilots through the Board in the future. The rev, resolution is not needed because the Board must already seek the approval of, of the County Commissioner or the County Mayor before entering into any new pilot or extending any existing pilot. Working together, the County Commission, the County Mayor, the County Attorney and the members of the Board have demonstrated, in my opinion, public accountability and financial responsibility. The Board operates with no government funding of any kind. It understands that elected officials must set public policy and it is the Board's responsibility to respect that authority in that direction. The Board is also mindful that the community is measured not just by the storehouse of its goods and services, but by the storehouse of its compassion and care for the disadvantaged, the young and the elderly. If we are truly to be the city of good abode, we must foster opportunity in the classroom and in the workplace. We must foster decent and safe and affordable housing for families and for the elderly. We must foster access to healthcare with the very best hospital facilities. We must be the city of good abode. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All right. And we're moving right along. Okay, so anybody, because I don't see any questions in the queue for this, for your presentation, Mr. Anderson. So, Mr. Martin Edwards and Stephanie Wright for the Memphis Health Edge and Housing Board. Are they on?
They are on. They, they were, they have called in. So we'll just, they just would need to unmute their phones to participate. They called in.
Okay.
Hello?
Mr. Edwards, can you hear us?
Yeah, yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, you, Mr. Edwards. So.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, so we're gonna go ahead and let you go ahead on with your presentation.
Okay, thanks. I want to introduce Ms. Wright and also want to introduce who's joined our conversation today, Dan Reed. He's the chairman of our Board. And I hope that both are on. I know Ms. Wright's on. Let me echo the statements of my good friend, Mr. Anderson about what our Boards do and for the good of the city. The City Board, as he mentioned, was created, I think during Mayor Hackett's term. And is primarily involved in the restoration and the construction of affordable housing. And you have with you in your packet an outline of the, the Board's responsibilities. And I think those responsibilities, ladies and gentlemen, boil down to two words. Underwriting and compliance. Our Board is very directly involved in underwriting low income, lower income housing for the city. And presently, we have approximately 100 pilots. Our next other main objective, of course, is the preservation and the compliance of those properties that we have issued a pilot to make sure that what was done, what was promised to be done, was done. And we have a full-time engineering firm. We have a full-time compliance officer. And so we move behind after a pilot is issued to make sure that what is being done, excuse me, what was promised to be done, is being done. I know we're a little short on time this year, today, but let me, let me say in 2020, we issued pilots that created about $500 million worth of new construction in, in the city of Memphis. And that is construction that went to a lot of housing that was not open or was dilapidated to the point that it could not be lived in, et cetera. And we're very proud of that. And we've recaptured and re-housing stock that was, shall we say, not good for our neighborhood. And I could name many projects that are, many big communities that have been helped by the, the fact that we've got particularly rehabilitated house. We also created about 500, 600 new housing and new contracts. We do, the Board is very interested in ensuring that we recap that, that housing is out there and put it back on the tax roll. Because a lot of it has removed from the tax roll or rolls, or it's now trouble that is not producing taxes that they should. So with that, I'll turn, I'll turn it over to, to Mr. Reed for his comments.
Thank you, Martin, and thank you, Councilman. I, I would just echo what Martin said, that this, this, this health, education and housing we work for the city is, is very involved in eliminating blight in our city. The, the jobs that have been created through, through the efforts of, of our pilots that we have issued. I, I would also say that in most cases, the, the, the taxes are frozen at the time, unless it's new construction and the majority of what we do is rehab. So the taxes are frozen. Developers come in and they inject money into the project to provide good, stable housing stock, affordable housing stock. One of the things that our Board does is they require, or we require that, that we, and we monitor tenant benefits that we require the developer to do in, in order to be granted these, these, these pilots. We monitor that internally as well as externally with a third party to make sure that they are in compliance. If they are not in compliance and their occupancy drops below a certain level, we put them on notice. And if they do not cure after they have been put on notice, then we eliminate the pilot. So it is, it is a, with, with our pilots, it, there's definitely some benefit back to the tenants that, that live on these properties. And I think Martin did a good job of showing what the 2020 Board activity was and, and what this, this, the small Board was, was able to do. That's about all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, yep, I'm looking in the queue real quickly. Councilman Jones, I see you. And so you go ahead with your question.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. Can somebody, and this is a, maybe a question for the three bodies that were in here. Considering that all three organizations that are presented today have the ability to grant pilots, can somebody give me what the lines of demarcation are? If any, in overlap?
I think Mr. Anderson touched on it. The City Board operates with only housing stock in the city of Memphis, if that helps you. We, we do not go out of the city and we're, we're rooted out in both education or in healthcare.
Okay, so, so, when we say the Memphis and Shelby County Health, Education, Housing, that, those are multiple boards within one organization?
No, they're two separate boards. Shelby County Commissioners and by City Council.
Okay, okay. Now, when we, so I guess if we're talking about just the Memphis Board, then I'm posing that question to the Mem, what would be the Memphis Board and then the DMC and then Edge. Are there not any duplication of effort with those three bodies being able to, to grant incentives?
Our, our focus is, from a lot of, we have income restriction. We also are, the issue of taxes and bonds, which are set aside. And we're focused only on affordable housing, except we're not focused on new housing.
Yeah, okay, okay. Wait, so, so there can be any, so new housing can be affordable?
It's, I heard, everything, you know, most, any, that's, for a house, 40%, 50% of the medium income or size experience.
Mr. Edwards, we're, we're experiencing a bad connection. Maybe I can get a follow-up offline.
Sir, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
No, no problem. Mr. Young, seeing that you're probably familiar with all of it and in your new role and old role, maybe you can provide a. No, no problem. Mr. Young, seeing that you're probably familiar with all of it and in your new role and old role, maybe you can provide a little bit of clarity for me.
Yeah, I was just gonna jump in and say that, uh, all of the agencies have different types of pilots. And so there, there's alignment with all of our programs, but they are different and unique. And so I, I would argue that we need all of them, um, and they, we can, we, we work in sync with each other.
Okay, that's, that's helpful, but I think that for the public, and even in the instance of a, a council member here, I just thought it was one, didn't necessarily know that there were three, even if there are distinctions between them, just to be able to communicate to the public of what's going on, I think it's helpful for those twenty-six of us to know this information.
Yes, and I think that's an action item that we can take away from this, is trying to figure out a, a better, more effective way for communicating the synergy amongst all of our agencies and in what instance the right tool is, is the one that should be used for that purpose. So that's the action item we'll take away from this.
Very helpful.
I agree with Paul.
All right. Councilman Jones, are you done? All right.
Yeah.
Any, any other, uh, councilmen or commissioners that have any questions regarding the Health and Ed?
Chairman Jones, can you hear me? This is Commissioner Turner.
Yes, uh, I can hear you. So Commissioner Turner, uh, you have the floor, you have two minutes, ask your question.
Yes, sir. My question is, uh, very, uh, simple. I, I once served on the Health Ed Board, actually before I got on the Commission, and this never came up, but I'm asking now, is, is, uh, is there a reason why the Health Ed Board doesn't help to support or finance, uh, Regional One? Since that is, I guess, a, a healthcare agency, uh, in the county? And if not, uh, why, and then the second part of that, if not, after you explain, why? Is it a possibility that the Health Ed Board could assist with financial support for our Regional One? Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, so, Mr. Anderson, you want to answer?
Yes, uh, thank you, thank you, Commissioner and, and former Board Member, Turner. Um, I think the reason we haven't done that is because I believe, uh, Regional One can be, um, financed through government obligations, and so that would be a lower, lower cost of borrowing than we could provide with revenue bonds. Certainly, uh, our Board would not object at all to issuing revenue bonds. Uh, they've never come before us and, and asked, uh, for us to issue bonds, but we would certainly be interested. I fear, though, that they can do better, um, with the government obligation bonds as opposed to revenue bonds that we would issue.
Uh, thank you. Commissioner Turner, okay, you have any more questions?
No, sir, that's it. Thanks.
All right, any other, uh, Commissioner or Councilmen's that have questions? Oh, uh, Councilwoman Logan.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, question is, the organizations that receive pilots, nonprofits that receive pilots and their properties are, uh, have code violations and do, are they, uh, given any type of, um, disciplinary action or, uh, are pilots ever revoked for those that are, um, always having violations or not taking care of their property?
Chairman, I, I will answer that from the Health Ed Board, if they have a violation, code violations, uh, our inspection team is, is part of going back behind that, and they are subject to have their pilots, uh, canceled if they do not correct.
Is that for the city as well, Chairman?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
I asked, Chairman, may I, I have a follow-up question?
Yes, go ahead.
Is that for the city as well?
Yes.
Yeah, that was Martin speaking for, for the city.
Okay, thank you. I'll go back to you.
All right, thank you. And I, I guess, uh, I have a follow-up question, since I work for the city and I work in code enforcement. And so there's a lot of, uh, properties that I've had the opportunity to go to, the Health Edge Board, uh, has control of it. And so, uh, when we have people who do not take care of these, of the properties that we put these bonds out on, and I know you just answered, yeah, we'll go back and, and then we'll revoke that, but I've seen it to where it gets so bad that they should have been closed down a long, long time ago. And so at what point, or is there a metrics that you utilize to determine whether or not, uh, these owners are in compliance and if they're not in compliance, when do you pull the plug? What, at what point?
With respect to the, uh, County Board, uh, there have been problems at times in the past. These are typically when projects are having difficulty and, uh, they're about to go under. And, uh, most of the projects that we have, uh, have pilots on, of course, we only have seven, but of the ones that we've had in the past, uh, we've had revenue bonds issued. And that would be a default under the revenue bonds if they're not maintaining, keeping the property, and that is the, uh, overall hammer, uh, that we have. Uh, all of, Health and Ed Boards, whether it's a city or the county, are prohibited from actually operating the project by state law. We can't operate it, uh, but we can, uh, oversee, uh, what is being done, uh, stay abreast of it and make sure that the bond trustee, uh, who is in charge of the bonds is aware of what's going on as well.
Okay, then how do we guarantee that how the monies that we put up are being utilized in the proper way? If, uh, you guys can't do anything but sit back and watch? And so you made a point to companies that are going under. Is there a monitoring mechanism that you guys look at to say, eh, we may need to step? Just trying to get those answers, because we've seen a lot of these properties go under and, uh, blighted properties again back, uh, in our communities.
Yes, that's a good question, and, and certainly with multifamily housing, that can, that can be a real problem in, in any community. Um, and what really handles it is, uh, we have a bond trustee, a corporate bond trustee, which is looking at the properties. And they are looking at both the payment, payments that are coming through, both to preserve the properties, uh, to keep them, uh, uh, available, open and in compliance with the, the bond documents, and also to make sure, um, that they're making payments on time to the bondholders. So that is our biggest hammer that we have, uh, to ensure that, uh, that they're being taken care of.
All right.
And, and I'm not aware of any code violations at, at the present time, uh, I'll add that.
Okay, don't make me go check the file, well, okay. So I'm, I'm gonna go back in the queue, uh, Councilwoman Logan.
Uh, was that a yes or a no? I, I, I need to know for sure that we are making sure that, um, the properties that, you know, getting these abatements are not the ones that are blighted. And if, and may, and if we don't have a definitive answer today, that's something that I, I would like to see come out of this.
Um, yes, uh, yes, it is a definitive answer, we are looking at that. And we know when there is a problem, because as the, as the title holder, the legal title holder of the property, even though we're not the beneficial owner, we hold legal title, the notice comes to us. So we're aware, and that's why I could, I could say to the Chairman that there are no violations with respect to our Board. Um, we know if there is a violation, because it comes to us, and, and they definitely know where to find me.
And I agree with Steve, it comes to us and, uh, uh, we do the same thing and we have answers.
All right, Councilwoman Logan, uh, did that answer your question?
Uh, yes, sir, thank you, Chair. Anything else, I'll, uh, reach out to them directly.
All right, thank you. All right, I don't see anyone else in the queue with any other additional questions for this segment of the presentation. And so, uh, we got a little time, and I want to get back to Councilman, uh, Jones and allow him, uh, to come back with his question, but we do have the trustee online and, uh, just want, if I can get, uh, trustee, just to.
Mr. Chairman, can you give me about five minutes? She logged out.
Come on. She's on.
You're back.
Okay. All right. So, trust. I- if you can give us a brief five-minute summary of your role in the collection of these pilots and, and what you do, and, you know, the amount of dollars that, uh, your office sees as it relates to, uh, all of these pilot funds, uh, would be helpful, especially, uh, from the City Council side, because you see it all, because it comes through you. Uh, I know we see it on the Commission side, but if you can just share that information with, uh, uh, this group, uh.
We, we see the county side, um, I, I have no involvement in the, the city pilots. Um, and we've got seven municipalities, so each one has a, a set of pilots that wants to, that has an IDB or Health and Ed Board. Um, and so those, um, uh, cities, whatever the cities do on their own also impacts, of course, the county taxes in most cases. Um, the little chart that's in your booklet, this is related to county taxes only. Uh, so for Shelby County, that does not include the impact, um, with regard to any, any pilots on city taxes. Seven municipalities are not included here. Um, the only city that's kind of included is Davidson Metro, because it's Davidson Metro. So this is, um, the pilots and TIFs for, uh, the four largest counties in the state. It is, uh, from publicly available information. The Davidson County TIFs are not there. We are still trying to get that. Um, that is the only thing that was not there. Most of this information comes from either their websites or their certified annual financial reports. So, um, some of these are estimates, but this is, uh, uh, obviously Shelby is correct, that is what we have. Um, and as the Boards issue pilots, contract with people, uh, sign up for pilot contracts, they, um, send those to the trustee's office and the assessor's office. Uh, changes are made in the, in the tax rolls based on the amount of the contract, whether it's, you know, fifteen years at twenty-five percent or whatever the contract is. And the, the people who had the pilot contract are getting the new deal. The pilot contract then stays in effect for however long it stays in effect. We bill it, um, and handle it very similar to taxes, although they don't go to lawsuit, they don't go to tax sale. Uh, it is a contract. And so what we attempt to do is keep the Boards informed of any time that a pilot is delinquent. Um, there is an annual pilot report on the county trustee's website. The last one there is 2019. We are about to wrap up 2020, and then the 2020 tax year will be on there. And, um, so that is available, it shows the amount of the pilot, it shows the recipient. There's quite a few pages, and it's fairly large, and, um, not really available by email. But, um, it shows the recipient, it shows what the normal tax paid would be for the assessment that's of record, and then it shows the difference. And, uh, so that is, that is available for anybody who wants to look at it. The, um, the information that you have right here is, um, uh, for your use, for your purposes. And, uh, essentially, right now, what we have is the Boards' banking pilots, um, at will. And, um, uh, the legislative oversight, if any, is up to the Council and the Commission.
All right, thank you. And so we do have some, uh, questions in the queue, so, uh, Councilman Jones, you have the floor.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Madam Trustee. How are you today?
Hi, Councilman, I'm well. Slightly damp, but well.
Look, I'm looking at this, this slide here, and can you talk, well, I guess I can, I can explain it, well, I can understand it, it's been playing in English. But I'm just trying to understand that tax incentive burden per capita here in Shelby County is essentially fifty percent higher than the next highest county, um.
Based on the information that's out there, that's correct. That is without including, if you are a Memphian, the impact of those pilots on the Memphis taxes. That is county taxes alone.
So this is just the county part?
Yes.
So Memphis burden would be even greater, would it not?
But that would, then, or if you were in Chattanooga, you're gonna have a Chattanooga burden in addition to the Hamilton County. So this is just the county.
Just the county portion of it. Oh, okay, okay, okay. What, do we know? How can we come up with a total, um, so it would be our finance department that would essentially have this? And provide us, I'm saying our being the city.
Memphis can probably provide it. So if you were in Memphis, you would have the county, the county, uh, amount and the city of Memphis amount. If you're in Arlington, you're gonna have the county amount and the city of Arlington amount, et cetera, so.
This would be somebody who lives unincorporated, Shelby County President?
Well, no, this, this is a, this is countywide per capita.
Okay, okay, but we just add those other areas on top.
You could add on the, a city amount, so.
Okay, now, to your knowledge, um, as far as, and you, you just made the statement that, uh, here the gov-, the, the bodies can provide these incentives at will. Do you know if the legislative bodies, the elected legislative bodies in these other areas have any say-so in these incentives?
No, I do not know.
Okay.
Um, in, in, in Shelby County and Memphis, and it's up to the locality. So here, that, um, authority or oversight or, or whatever it was, was given, uh, by, by legislation. And so whether Nashville or, or, uh, Chattanooga or Hamilton County did the same thing, I do not know. We can check.
Well, if, if you can check on that and, uh, maybe by, if you have that information by the next meeting that we have, so you can share or, uh, share it with everyone, that would be helpful, because, you know, this, this is a public meeting and, you know, it is the intent of all of these discussions to, for the, for it to be, uh, in the public domain. And I think that it's helpful for the discussions on how we as the legislative bodies and just the elected official here in Memphis and Shelby County move forward with this.
All right, uh, thank you, uh, Councilman Jones. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Is anybody else with any additional questions for the trustee? All right, in hearing none, I'm gonna turn it back over to, uh, Chairman Covet, and we're gonna go into this very final, uh, phase of our meeting today. Uh, Chairman Covet, you have the floor.
All right, thank you very much, Chairman. Okay, uh, I'm left to gather, and it seems like we've got a presentation coming from, uh, we've got one more presentation, I believe, the next meeting. So partly what I'm looking to get from you guys is what are the follow-on questions? What are some of the follow-on action items you'd like to touch on? So, and I'm sure Martavis wants to go, so, Martavis, what you got?
So, a lot of the questions that were, uh, addressed by Mr. Dolberg, I submitted a number of those. And a lot of mine would really just be follow-up and just more, uh, more questions about questions that I had. Because one of the things, if we talk about. Because one of the things, if we talk about, you know, there was a discussion about the multiplier. And what would have been helpful for us, for all of us, is to have a sample, and you know, it didn't have, well, all of this stuff is in public domain, for us to look at these numbers for a pilot application. And to see, okay, well, and you know, like I said, it may not be me who's asking that question. It could be Commissioner Wright. But seeing, I would like just more interaction and being able to have more, to go into a more in-depth discussion about it. So, you know, one of the questions that I had, and that's why I wanted to, I wanted the staff to send out what some of the questions were. Because I can go through them and may piggyback on something that somebody else may have asked. But, you know, part of, and I didn't know this going into it, and I would just look at a pilot application and they would list what these sales tax revenues are. And we know that if that calculation is done based upon what the nine and three-quarter sales tax percentage is, we don't get all of that back. So how does that fit into this whole evaluation? I want, I think it should be in the public domain. It should be up for our discussion. How does that factor into if it's 9.75 that they're calculating, but we only get 2.75 back? How does that go into the evaluation? So I just want to base, and you often look at my questions, look at some of the other ones. I just think it wasn't a deep enough dive into what I wanted to come out of this.
Response to that would be, Councilman, the meeting on April 15th where you're going to get your dive. And I don't know why it didn't come to me, but it's the chamber that will be presenting. So what I'm hearing from you though, Martavis, you want Edge to come back. You have follow-on questions for them. Basically, if you want to submit them beforehand or however.
They're here.
Okay. What would be a follow-on is we'll figure out, I guess, a block of time, and I'm open to suggestions about how we phrase or how we, for lack of better words, put Edge back there and then just let everybody get in the queue and start asking questions. That kind of sounds like where it's going. Is that correct?
That's fine. And even this part here, this dialogue is still helpful in getting us somewhere. Because from the standpoint, you know, I don't know what, why we need to have a meeting with the chamber right now when we hadn't fully delved and addressed everything with that. That could be perhaps a third meeting. I know we're going to the budget, but I submitted, I submitted 12 questions. One of them was one, A, B, and C, but all together, they're 12. And I don't feel that they were adequately addressed for us to have a dialogue and for us to leave with a better understanding, for us to have some deliberations, the discussions, and for us to chart a path of how we move forward. I didn't get that from this presentation. And we're not going to get it if all we're going to have are PowerPoint versus a discussion amongst the elected bodies. And we can't be putting the artificial, you know, look, we got 26 people on here, but barely a quarter actually spoke up.
Whoever is breathing heavily, let's, all right, good, somebody muted. Councilman, let's, I guess Martavis, you're doing such a good job. What can I say? All right. I don't know who's breathing, but stop.
There's no name appearing.
All right.
There's no name. So I'm not sure who it is.
All right. Then get ready to cut them off.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay. My bad. All right. Martavis, what I think I'm hearing is we need to block off a large section of time for Edge for follow-on questions. And if you would like to share those follow-on questions, knowing that your follow-on will begat a follow-on to get a follow-on. And let's see, Chairman Jones, if we can kind of get together, we may need another meeting just to get the ground rules. Because again, I think that once we really start getting into, let's just remember what our objective was today. We've got the nuts and bolts. We know where we've been. We know how we got here. We know where we are. We know a decent idea how it works. Now the discussion and follow-on comes in. So am I on the right track? Thumbs up?
Yep. Yeah. And so let me add this. And so, and I do think in getting all of these additional follow-on questions and all of that, then the next question is, all right. After hearing all of this, getting all of our answers, what would be both bodies' next step in seeing if changes need to be made? If, or how do we interact a little bit more? I don't know the answers to that, but this is going to take every member of both legislative bodies to be actively involved in that communication. If not pilots and incentives and all of that, then what? What are we going to do next? And if we can't get to that point, then is there an ability to make some changes that we can all agree upon that could work good going into the future without hindering the process, but more oversight into what's going on here? And I think that comes out in that next meeting. And if a third meeting is needed to vet those concerns or potential changes or, you know, I think then that becomes to the two legislative bodies if anything comes out of this, but at least that conversation has been had.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is that there's a takeaway, next steps that needs to be put into the tail end of the meeting, sort of like a, what more do we want to know? What questions do we have going forward? What potential courses of action do we want to look into? Again, am I on the right path?
Yeah, I kind of think that, you know, was the whole purpose, was to really get a better understanding of all these different boards. Now we've heard from all of them and how do we want to move forward from here? And if we think or deem that any changes need to be done or we continue moving forward as we've been, and that's what this is all about, so.
Okay. Okay. Dr. Warren, you're in the queue. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just thinking that it seems like people have general ideas about what they think ought to happen or what proposals of any sort of reforms they might like to see. I would like to have people bring that information to us by email or whatever before we have our next meeting so we can think about it and look at it. I mean, this was very informative. I learned a lot by reading and even though I missed part of the meeting to go to a COVID thing, I felt this was really good for me to understand all these different groups and what they're doing. And I guess part of the issue you've got somewhere involved is that these boards were formed because there's a lot of work going on out there. There was more work than the council could do or the commission could do. And so it was sort of delegated off to allow other people to do it. I see Martavis shaking his head and saying no, but it looks to me like they're doing a lot of work, but maybe not. But that's one of the things we should think about as we move forward. So I would like to see what suggestions we have that may make this better and fairer and do what we wanted to do to promote economic growth coming before we have the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairs, thank you.
Okay. So what I hear you asking is potential questions of body, of what potential changes would you like to investigate? Is that kind of, I'm reading it right? All right. I got a thumbs. Staff, did you catch that?
No, I didn't catch that. Can you say that again?
Yeah. If people have generalized, a general idea about reforms they think need to be made and the processes that we have going on here for Edge and our other boards that are doing development and using funds to like help make our community better, if there is specific things they think we should do, give us those suggestions so we can think about it before the next meeting.
And so let me add this to that. And I think it's important because, and I think a lot of the, in both legislative bodies, and for those questions that you want to see, I think you need to put a deadline on when they should be in so that each legislative person has an opportunity to review them, go over them, and maybe even have some extra time to say, hey, I see this and what about adding this to it? It gives, it opens that dialogue up just a little bit more if we give each other an opportunity and timeframe to review what those reforms may look like.
That would be an excellent point because it would also give us the parameters for time of discussion, say 30 minutes of discussion on X question or X potential reform. That's excellent. With permission, let's go to Commissioner Milton. You're recognized.
And then we'll come back, Commissioner Sawyer is in and we'll come back to her chairman after Commissioner Milton.
First of all, gentlemen, I'd like to thank you both for bringing this together. I think it's been very helpful for me. You know, the main reason I participated was that I actually just, I wanted to get information. So I've been sitting here throughout the whole process listening so I could get that information. You know, I received the information booklet, which I want to commend those who put it together is outstanding, but I received it today, so obviously I need some time to digest it. So to Councilman Jones, I do want to point out that, yes, there may be several who have not spoken up, but I think for many of us, it was a listening session. I did have a few questions, thanks to you and Commissioner Sawyer, who actually answered, asked the questions that I was interested in and I received the answers for them. But I think this will require us to continue. We can't stop all of this, I think, in one sitting or two sittings. But definitely, I think I've gotten a great deal more knowledge about the process than I had before. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sawyer, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman Covet. First, I just want to, you know, again, thank everybody for the time. This was really important for me, for us to begin this dialogue, regardless of what comes out. I think that as bodies who are in the midst of our four-year term, it's really important. This is a topic that's been brought up repeatedly by constituents. So I'm hopeful that future conversations drive us towards some type of update and evaluation of the needs of the city of Memphis, of the population of Memphis. What I do want to say is also thank you to our administrative staff, to Brooke and to Karan especially for bringing these books together. I was really hard on Karan about these books up until an hour ago. And so I just want to say, I've now had a chance to go through everything and it's really a robust packet. And so I thank you for that and for getting this event together. But what I wanted to offer to the chairmans about moving forward is us, one, Councilman Jones has stated repeatedly the nature of this being a public meeting, and I don't want us to get too much into email communication where this is not a public dialogue. I think there's some communication that we need to have in a public setting, especially if it's about commissioners and council members sharing ideas and, you know, building off each other. So as much as possible, we should try to continue that conversation in public. Thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you. Council Lady Robinson, you're recognized.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to say thank you for today's dialogue. I did send my question in like I was requested, so I heard my answer. But there's one thing that's missing in the whole packet for me. If I were presenting something to the public, what would our scorecard look like? What are those?
Hold on one second, Councilwoman Robinson. We need to mute someone that called in without their phone on mute. Give me one second to mute the caller that's just called in. Okay. You can go ahead and apologize for that.
Okay. Thank you. So for the whole group and everybody that's involved here, what is important to us? What are those things that we want to report back to the public in a manner that they would understand? And what would that scorecard look like? I have, we'll be making some recommendations as we move forward. However, I want to thank everyone for, this is a lot of information, a lot of things to think about, but what's important is what our community will get out of it. How do we report it back? And how do we measure what deals that we're doing? So if we could come up with that document, we'll be batting a thousand. Thank you for everybody's hard work. Let's create a scorecard so that we can see where we are, measure where we're going, and improve upon those things that we'd like to see improvement. Thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you, Council Lady. Seeing other members in the queue, Chair Jones and I'll close this out. I just, I cannot thank staff enough, you guys putting this together, getting all the ideas and getting it to us. Well done. I cannot thank you enough.
Mr. Chairman?
Excuse me?
Mr. Chairman, this is Karan. Can I make a quick suggestion for the body? Both bodies? Okay. Brooke and I have been listening and we've been following what you guys have been indicating that you want. I believe that you still have a bit of unfinished business with the presentation coming from the chamber and also a follow-up Q and A. I know you guys don't want to hear me say this, but I think you need to add that meeting for the 15th and schedule us a third meeting to do your follow-up and your reforms and consider evaluation scorecard. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I think you're on the right.
I wanted to add one more thing because as we're sitting here, one issue that we had was getting things in in a timely fashion. So I know everybody has proposals and I think last summer, when everybody had a bunch of proposals for budgets, and I think we were discussing some criminal justice issues, we gave a deadline. And so I think it would be helpful to do that as well. And while we have a captive audience, we're going to have a meeting on the 15th or if we're going to schedule another one to set a deadline for people to send in their proposed legislation so that we can send it all out at once as we did with the council when we discussed a group of items. So that way, everybody has it. Any documents we have today, we post on the council website to address Commissioner Sawyer's concerns. If we have that in a timely fashion, we can publish it as we do our documents so that it's up for public review. And it also gives commissioners and council members time to review it. So while we're here, if there is anything that you want people to have ready by the April 15th meeting, I think it would be wise to give a deadline today and discuss that now and not leave without that in place.
How about, everybody, how about the 10th? I don't have my calendar in front of me, but what day of the week is the 15th?
That's a Thursday, Mr. Chairman.
How about the Friday before? How about the Friday before that?
Yes, sir. That's April the 9th.
So I think that's a really good day, other than we have to compile the documents and get them in and account for late submissions. So I would prefer if we were to put that date closer to April the 6th.
Right.
Or April 7th. That way, we have time on April 8th and 9th to get them compiled and printed so that you aren't getting the documents the day before. I want to avoid that so that people have time to review it. So if we could say on the 7th, if you have any suggested legislation or proposals to have it into Karan or myself, and we'll pull that together so that when we come together next time, everybody can see what everyone else is thinking and prepare their comments and questions accordingly.
April 7th sounds dandy. Chairman Jones, can I get a thumbs up on that? April seventh sounds dandy. Uh, Chairman Jones, can I get a thumbs up on that? I got a thumbs up. Uh, deadlines, submissions is April, uh, April seventh or April fifteenth meeting. Staff, if you would also look into a possible third date. Uh, at this point, like, at this point, put something in mind, but let's see how the second meeting goes. Before we just go ahead and say we're going to have three, four, or five more meetings. Just, just be thinking out loud. Uh, before Chairman Jones closes us out, Councilman Jones, you wish to be recognized?
No, I just wanted to say thank you, uh, Chairman, and thank you to the staff for, for pulling us together for this and having this discussion. Uh, colleagues, I don't see any greater, uh, business that we can collectively do. Than to tackle this economic issue and address the poverty issue that we have here in the city of Memphis. I know that Mayor Strickland earlier talked about our poverty rate is a little bit low, is, is lower than it's been in twenty years. That's across the country folk, but that was because of the economic stimulus package that was passed in Washington. That has nothing to do, we can't take credit for that. That's a, that's a one-time hit. But what are we going to do with the stuff in the discussions that we're having right now? That's going to, that's going to set up, uh, set us up permanently to address that poverty rate. So that, you know, it's, let's, let's, uh. Let's, let, I know we're all taking this seriously and the fact that this is only like the third or fourth meeting that we jointly had. In my six years of elected office on the city council, you know, speaks to, uh, speaks to, I think we need to have more of these. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, uh, Councilman Jones. Um, Chairman Jones, would you like to close us out?
Uh, absolutely. Uh, and, uh, I can't say it enough. It's been said, uh, many times about the staff and the good work. That on both sides of the street coming together to put this, uh, information together for, uh, their elected officials. Uh, and I just simply want to say, uh, you know. Not just to, we're not just having meetings, just to be meeting, uh, soundbite. Uh, I am certain that there are a lot of, uh, commissioners as well as council. Uh, councilmen and councilwomen that have, uh, his concerns and would like to have input to do something. On a better scale. But the one thing that, that I will say, we've put some measures in place today. We're going to ask that you get those questions in. Uh, I think that helps, uh, if, uh, we lead by example. And what we're asked to do if we want to get something done about this or whatever type of reforms, if any. That may come out of this. And I think if we stick to that, uh, I, and I will also like to add this. Uh, and even if you have some additional concerns, uh, that you want to submit, please submit that. Please submit that. And I think as much information as we have, uh, will help us, uh. When we get to that final stage or final meeting and to, you know, justify what it is we'd like to see. Uh, that could be done better. So, uh, with that being said, I want to thank each and every one of you. Uh, for, uh, sitting in and, uh, listening, those that, uh, if you didn't ask questions. Uh, it is, is my prayer and hope that we hear more from each and every one of you. Some of your questions probably got answered. Uh, from, uh, other people who presented questions. But, uh, I think all of us truly need to be in part. I want to thank, uh, Chairman, uh, Covet. Uh, we have actually met, uh, on multiple occasions trying to get all of this set up for, uh, each and every one of you. And so with, uh, nothing else, please get your questions in by, uh, April seventh to Brooke and to Ms. Fosson. And, uh, we will meet again on, uh. April fifteenth. And then that's all I have. Uh, Chairman Covet, you have any last, uh, parting word?
Phase one informational, uh, meeting is now complete.